Hey, good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, June 21st. It is 9:01 a.m. We will go ahead and call this meeting to order. We will begin with the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We would ask folks if you are both willing and able to stand for both, and we will introduce Pastor Perrin Mason of the St. Paul African Methodist Episcopal Church today. So, good morning, Pastor.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning. Let us pray. Oh God, we come before you this day with thanks for this another day. We thank you, God, for our growth, for our improvement, for our stretching beyond barriers, oh God. This day, we are asking you, oh God, for just more grace and more mercy. Also, God, as we gather together, we are thankful for our mayor and the city council persons, their families, and every employee, and everyone that dawns the door of City Hall. Help us to work together collectively. God, thank you for opening up venues that we may hear the voices of the silent ones that we've never heard before. We pray for those families that are going through grief due to senseless gun violence, oh God. We ask now, dear God, we thank you for your safety and covering upon City Hall and every official and every citizen of Wichita. God, with your help, we'll get through this. So now, dear God, bless every business, every place, oh God, that people gather. Let us know that together, we are one. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Madam Clerk.
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 14th, 2022.
As every member had a chance to review the minutes, and if so, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, thou make a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is with second by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Have received seven yeas votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Proclamation, mentoring a girl in construction work.
If you're here to receive the proclamation for mentoring a girl in construction work, go ahead and make your way to the front. Don't be shy, come on up. At one time, we had like the near entirety of McConnell Air Force Base here, so I know we could fit lots of people back here. So, come on back. Proclamation of the City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas, women have contributed to the construction industry and continue to make strides for tradeswomen, to engineers, architects, accountants, project superintendents, supervisors, and business owners to clerical support. Whereas, mentoring a girl in construction program known as Magic Camp helps to promote commitment to increasing the number of women choosing careers in the construction industry. Whereas, young ladies ages 14 through 18 will explore and develop basic skills in the area of carpentry, aviation, transportation, and other various trade skills. They learn that there is room in the construction industry for their dreams too. And whereas, a supportive atmosphere has been provided by the Kansas Department of Transportation, which City of Wichita Office of Community Services, WSU Tech, and local construction companies to expose young ladies to hands-on projects, field trips, and presentations. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim June 20 through the 24th, 2022, as Mentoring a Girl in Construction Week, and call upon citizens, parents, public and private agencies, businesses, schools, and colleges in the city to join the Magic Camp coordinators in supporting efforts that increase public awareness of education and careers available to young ladies and women in construction.
Thank you, Mayor Whipple. On behalf of the Kansas Department of Transportation and City of Wichita, we say thank you so much for honoring this and making that proclamation, and these young ladies appreciate you honoring and allowing us this opportunity to be here today. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk.
World Refugee Day.
If you're here to receive the proclamation for the World Refugee Day, please make your way to the front. Come on, come on, Annie, I see you. There we go. Proclamation of the City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas, World Refugee Day has been commemorated on June 20th by the United Nations High Commission for Refugees since 2001, and honors the strength and courage of people who have been forced to flee their homelands due to a well-founded fear of prosecution. And whereas, the world is currently experiencing the worst refugee crisis in history with over 84 million displaced person persons, including 26.6 million refugees who seek safety from prosecution in places such as Afghanistan, Ukraine, and other crisis zones around the world. And whereas, the City of Wichita strives to be a welcoming haven where all refugees are treated equitably and receive the critical support that is necessary to thrive from local businesses, educational institutions, faith groups, and community organizations. And whereas, refugees have an important place in Wichita and contribute to our community by enriching our cultural and using their multitude of professional skills, education, and experiences to provide the area's workforce with essential workers to start businesses and to create a more diverse Wichita. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim June 20, 2022, as World Refugee Day, in the City of Wichita, and encourage all citizens to uphold our most highly esteemed values of respect and acceptance by embracing refugees and welcoming our newest neighbors in a manner which allows for full integration within our community, building a stronger and more united Wichita.
World Refugee is an occasion to build empathy, raise awareness, and to recognize the resilience in building their lives. According to the United Nations Higher Commission of Refugees, over 84 million men, women, and children around the world have been forced to flee their homes. Among them are over 26.6 million refugees. From fiscal year 2010 to 2021, Kansas has resettled over 5,280 refugees plus 296 SIVs, Special Immigrant Visa holders, by refugee agencies like IRC Kansas, Episcopal Migration Ministries, and Catholic Charities. I want to recognize the work of our dedicated staff, volunteers, and community partners for stepping into the crisis. As people were mobilized out of Afghanistan, and after years of defunding refugee agencies across the network, for fiscal year 2022, IRC Kansas welcomed more than 600 neighbors, including more than 400 from Afghanistan. Organizations like IRC Kansas ensures that the basic needs of our new neighbors are met. This includes food, housing, education, medical care, mental health, and employment. And this is possible because of the support of our volunteers and community partners and elected officials that welcome our neighbors with open arms. Thank you, Mayor Whipple, and each of the council members for the proclamation and for everything that you have done to support our efforts to be an inclusive and safe environment to our new Americans in Wichita, Kansas. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Pride Month.
If you're here to receive the proclamation for Pride Month, please make your way to the front. Proclamation of the City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas, the City of Wichita is a welcoming community and an exceptional place to live, learn, work, play, and raise a family. And whereas, our nation was founded upon and is guided by a set of principles that every person is created equal and has the right to life, liberty, and a pursuit of happiness. And whereas, Wichita recognizes the importance And whereas, Wichita recognizes the importance of equality and freedom, and that each resident shall be accorded the full recognition and protections of the law. And whereas, the City of Wichita's lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender LGBT community are a vital part of all industries and professions and contribute to a stronger local economy. And whereas, the City of Wichita is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all its residents and preventing discrimination and bullying based on sexual orientation and gender identity. And now, therefore be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of June, 2022, as Pride Month. In the City of Wichita, and urge citizens to recognize and celebrate the contributions made by members of the LGBT community, and to actively promote our Wichita values of acceptance, equality, and liberty.
My name is Jim Hall. I have the honor of being President of Wichita Pride. On behalf of Wichita Pride, I want to thank Mayor Whipple and our city council members for taking this initiative. Wichita is a much-changed city from the time that I was a child, much more accepting, much more inclusive, but we've still got a lot of work to do. I'd like to invite all of you to all of the activities beginning this week, this Thursday. There is a prom, a senior prom. For those of us who didn't feel comfortable at our own prom, there will be a prom on Thursday night at the Crown Uptown. Friday night, we're calling this Wichita Summer Pride Days. We have an event at Nafsker Park, which is going to be a big party with a lot of healthcare represented there also. Saturday morning, we have the Unity March, beginning at 10 o'clock at Old Town Square. It's in conjunction with Equality Kansas. They will march, our marchers will march down to Nafsker Park. We will have some speeches by several community leaders here at that time. Then we will have the family picnic. It is a very inclusive event for families, for everyone. Does require that you buy a pride button, so that's seven bucks, but when you come in for that, you keep that button. And as we move into activities in September, we do some of ours in September because it's really hot here in June. And a lot of communities have done that and do do activities later in the year. I think Phoenix does theirs in April because in the summertime, it would be just too too hot there. We will have our opening night show at Century 2. This is our first year to be at Century 2. We've tried the last two years, but the pandemic sort of kept us out of there. We will have on Sunday more, or Sunday, we have Equality Rally at noon on Sunday in front of the old historic courthouse. We have the Pride Parade at 1 o'clock, and it will go into Century 2. The Pride Festival goes from noon until 6 o'clock, again, at Century 2. Those are the last weekend in September. Again, Mayor Whipple, thank you so much for recognizing this very vital and active community.
Madam Clerk?
Public Agenda: Celestrat Set, City Finances Not Being Transparent.
All right, rolling into our public agenda. As always, we ask for folks to be respectful of the speakers. Please allow them their full five minutes without interruption. If you go over slightly, we'll of course let you finish your thought, but Celeste, you don't need me to tell you how this works. But for the others who are watching, that's how we do the public, public part of this. So thank you for being here.
Good morning. Celestrat, Wichita native and community volunteer. City finances are not transparent. It is difficult to read the city's financial statements and determine where money is going. I have filed numerous Freedom of Information requests to find out. Sometimes the answers I get are incorrect. Then I have to wait weeks, even months, like I did recently, for someone to research the mistake and clarify the answer. Thank you, city council members, who have helped me get answers. Thank you also to city staff for being patient and finding what I needed to know. Taxpayers will soon see the 2023 proposed budget. The budget will show expenses to run the city. The budget will also show revenue received from taxes and fees. But the budget is hard to understand. Funds move in and out of accounts, and transaction descriptions may say only that a transfer occurred. Star bond debt is over 100 million, and yet there is no mention of that debt in the budget or CIP. The city budget simulator on the city website is also not helpful. The model is way too simple. A person using the simulator can only change four spending categories, parks and libraries, for example. But what about bond debt payments? Why can't we model the amount of debt the city takes on? The new ball stadium cost 100 million and was not in the budget model. Or what if we want to model using funds to fix irrigation in downtown flowerbeds instead of building more pickleball courts? The budget model is incomplete as it ignores revenue. Why? Let us decide how much hotel guest tax money and TBID goes to visit Wichita. Maybe we actually want half of the local sales tax to do what it was intended to do, lower our property taxes. The budget simulator is supposed to provide you with valuable feedback from taxpayers, but actually, you are limiting our input by limiting our choices. If you honestly want our feedback, let us have more say. City finances are complicated. Please make improvements on transparency and accountability. For accountability, publish financial results of development projects. Five years after a project is completed, require a cost-benefit analysis showing profit or loss. 10 years later, do it again, include net present value, internal rate of return, and payback. Let WSU do the analysis for you and publish the results. What was Waterwalk? Has it been costing us to date? When will the new ball stadium become profitable? What happens after 2027 when the revenue we're tapping from an earlier star bond phase ends? Quit hiding the costs of public-private partnerships. Rodney and Brandon Stephen were given $750,000 to renovate the Wichita ice rink, but this loan isn't shown in the city's budget or in the financial statements. So how much does Genesis owe taxpayers? The loan schedule shows one amount, but it can't be right because loan payments were made. A second number found in the city manager's emails is also too low. A third number came from newspaper articles about the city's lawsuits against Genesis for breach of contract, but it can't be right either. If Genesis has only made one loan payment, that means the amount they owe us would be closer to $700,000. So what does Genesis owe the city? Financial statements contain vague descriptions and are sometimes incorrect. I found information in the financial statements that major work had been done on Century 2. This didn't look right because major improvements to Century 2, like repairing the roof, have not been done in 15 years. I discovered the money was actually spent on a private hotel. Waterwalk fare filled in. The bond debt was also incorrectly labeled as stormwater utilities. And quit referring to an internal auditor in the financial statements. We haven't had one for three years. Here's my suggestions. First, I've asked this before and I'll ask it again. Get an advanced search feature for the city website. Second, get a better budget simulator model, one that includes revenue and debt modeling. Third, TIF and CID projects should be described on the economic development page and include debt owed and revenue for each project. Publish five- and 10-year cost-benefit analyses for these projects. Fourth, be more explicit in the financial statements. You are not using one-half of the countywide 1-cent sales tax reduced property tax. Some of it is actually paying off the debt for star bonds, K96 in particular. Put in a description about historic tax credits and why you are not using them to renovate Century 2 and the former public library. Describe what your plans are for both buildings. Fifth, update reports timely to the website. There's no link to the 2020 annual report for pensions. It was supposed to be there last year. The report for pensions in 2021 should be there, too. If you truly want taxpayer input on the budget, give us a more sophisticated budget model. Make transparency a goal for the websites and for the city financial statements. Be accountable, be honest, be transparent. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Consent Agenda Items 1 through 14.
All right, I guess we're moving on to Consent Agenda. Is there discussion on Consent Agenda? If there's no discussion on Consent Agenda, then I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommended action on Consent Agenda and to pass it as is. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk, roll up and roll. Members cast the vote. I've received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Petitions for Public Improvements.
Chair recognizes the Honorable Gary Jansen of the Public Works Utilities and Engineering Department.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. Gary Jansen, Public Works Engineering. The petitions before you this morning represent 100% improvement district for each respective petition or valid per Kansas statute. Wichita Destination Development District 2 includes new petitions for water and sewer improvements. Cedardale addition in District 5 includes a new petition for water improvements. Staff recommend city council approve the new petitions and budgets, adopt the resolutions, and authorize necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Are there questions for staff? See none. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommended action to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk, roll up and roll. Members cast their vote. Use my lagging. There we go. I've received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Public Hearing to Consider a Request for Deannexation of Land Owned by Air Capital Industrial Park, LLC, generally located on the south side of West 61st Street North and within one-half mile east of North Seneca Street.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Scott Wadel from the Planning Department. And today, you've got two deannexations. This is the first one up by 61st Street. So let's see if we've got a graphic. Here we go. So this item is a public hearing for deannexation based on a petition by the property owners. Property is approximately 21 acres in size. It is located on the south side of 61st Street, within one-half mile east of North Seneca. The property is Zoned LI Limited Industrial, and it is surrounded by the city of Park City on the north, east, and south sides. On May 17th, the Wichita City Council approved an agreement with Park City to deannex the property. The agreement specifies payments to the City of Wichita from Park City through the year 2047, which is described in greater detail in the staff report. The City of Wichita would have a challenge servicing this site due to the distances to water and sewer infrastructure. In terms of the process, public notice about this public hearing has been provided and distributed. And so the recommended action is that the city council conduct the public hearing on the petition for deannexation, make the appropriate findings, and grant the petition. And in terms of findings, I guess I should note that this is not like a zoning case where you have to have findings for the golden factors. It's simply just a finding that you find it appropriate. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none. Thank you. Input from the public on this item? See none. Return discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then the chair will recognize Councilmember Ballard as this falls into District 6.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we take the recommended action and conduct the hearing on the petition for deannexation, make appropriate findings, and grant the petition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk, roll up and roll. Members cast the vote. I've received six yea votes, seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Public Hearing to Consider a Request for Deannexation of a Land Owned by Meadow Lakes Beach Corporation, generally located on the west side of South Clifton Avenue, within one-quarter mile north of East 55th Street North.
Good morning again. Scott Wadel from the Planning Department. This item is also a public hearing for deannexation based on a petition by the property owners. The site in this case is approximately five acres in size, and it is in the Oaklawn Improvement District. In 2006, it was annexed into the City of Wichita. In 2016, the 18th Judicial District Court ruled that the property was wrongly annexed into the city. In 2021, the City of Wichita, Cedric County, and Oaklawn came to an agreement about how services should be provided to the site. In terms of the request, the property owner is requesting deannexation so that the development can continue. And you can see on this graphic that there is a subdivision that's been planted on this site. Future services will be provided based on the agreement, again, between the City of Wichita, Cedric County, and Oaklawn. In terms of the process, public notice for the public hearing has been provided and distributed. In terms of recommendation, it is recommended that the city council conduct the public hearing on the petition for deannexation, make the appropriate findings, and grant the petition. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none. Input from the public on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, the chair recognizes Councilmember Hoheisel of District 3.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we conduct the public hearing on the petition for deannexation, make appropriate findings in either, and grant the petition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk, roll up and roll. Members cast the vote. I've received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Wichita Downtown Parking and Multimodal Plan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor Whipple and City of Council members. Hi, my name is Tierra Vermont, and I work for the Department of Transportation, and it's my first time up here, so I may be a little amateurish. I'm here to first talk about the Wichita Downtown Parking and Multimodal Plan with you this morning. In 2018, and the arrows should work. There we go. The city contracted with Walker Consultants to develop the parking and multimodal plan. Work began that summer and continued for 18 months. Key elements of this work include public outreach, the identification of management and operational strategies to bring progress to the parking program in Wichita, and this information is, in this plan, is still very relevant today. We could pick up this plan with the policies and suggestions in it and use it. The pandemic interrupted the momentum of this work in 2020. In 2018, the process for the plan looked like this slide. Step one was data gathering. Step two was policy formation engagement. Step three was program recommendations. Scott Wadel was the project manager for this at the time, and he got to step four, and the pandemic happened. So the pandemic has interrupted this workflow. And I'll really quickly go through Scott's old slides. The stakeholder engagement back then looked like steering committees, focus works, and online surveys. The data collection was robust. They did parking inventories for the downtown core. All of the city's street fronts and all of the lots were considered, and the working groups came together and developed draft goals and a vision for downtown parking that's in keeping with the downtown master plan. So the draft recommendations include policies, programs, and infrastructure, and the final phase of this work remains to be completed. Since it was paused, the elected leadership has changed, staff has changed, and the advisory committee members have all changed. The path forward is shown on the next slide. And it includes recently appointed steering committee, a technical advisory committee, the Advanced Plans Commission, the Wichita Bike Ped, and the Wichita Transit Boards, downtown Wichita, as well as the district advisory boards. The request today is to bring Walker back to assist with a series of education and consensus billing workshops with these various groups to prepare the city for, prepare the plan for final city council consideration sometime in November or December. for final city council consideration sometime in November or December of this year. The agreement with Walker is for $69,440. It will be paid for if approved by the parking fund. Walker Consultants is a nationally recognized subject matter expert on this, in the field of parking, and I'm here to stand for any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Are there questions for staff? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. One quick question. This, this was a whole lot of work, and I know the pandemic paused it. How does this play in with the downtown streets plan? Because some of that, the changes, two-way to one-way and all, that may change some of the parking. So will these be complete at the same time, or?
They're going to move forward together with the exact same steering committee, the exact same technical advisory committee, and the same process. I think what's going to happen, we have the downtown streets plan kicking off in the first week of July with the steering committee, and then a series of tight meetings after that. And we will be staggering this plan with that plan with those same groups.
Thank you.
Further questions for staff? See none. Thank you. Oh, excuse me. Councilmember Frye.
Sorry, I laid on the button there. I appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Would it be an additional cost to this, to bring it to the additional advisory boards? I mean, because my neighbors and residents drive and park downtown. I think they should have a say in what the plan says.
I need to read the scope. There may be an additional cost, yeah. I'm not saying we won't. I think there's a way to do that even without Walker or staff. We could record the Walker.
Okay, thank you.
Teaching session.
Further questions for staff? See none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there input from the public on this item? See none. Bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. To Councilmember Frye's point, if we do get that recorded, could we just send that to all the DABs? That way, everybody has an opportunity.
Further discussion? If there is no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the agreement with Walker Consultants and authorize necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. I've received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Propel Small Business Loan Program update.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Jamie Buster with City Manager's Office. I have some fun news for you today, so. As you know, Propel started early 2021 when funds were allocated from the Hyatt One, from the Hyatt Regency Funds to District One. On May 24th, 2021, we launched the Propel District One Loan Fund. This went to provide women-owned, minority-owned businesses with a little extra help during hard times. We had 11 applicants, but we awarded one loan. So during that time afterwards, staff kind of took a step back. We evaluated everything. In December, we were given a donation of $100,000 from InTrust Bank, and we also had $220,000 in CDBG funds to help supplement the program. With that extra funding, we rebranded the Propel Loan, and it became the Propel Small Business Loan Fund. This opened citywide, and it launched January 18th to March 18th of 2022. We had 29 applications. Forty was collective between both rounds of the funding. Of the total 40 applications, seven were selected in round two, and one was selected in round one. So we've had, we generated a lot more interest in it the second round by opening it citywide. You can tell we've had a couple other districts involved in it. So what we're here today is during review of the applications, the loan review team kind of found a way to make it more worthwhile for the city and open it on an ongoing basis instead of just saying, hey, we're going to be open randomly at this period so everybody gets their applications in. Can show reading factors to that was there was too much time for the application period. In the second round, we had it open for two months instead of one, and it just allowed too much time between their initial application to the time they were awarded their funds. With the rolling basis, applications will be accepted on the 30th of every month, and then the next month, we will review about mid-month those applications. There's no impact to the general fund, and this is a revolving loan program, so it'll supplement as we get payments in. We ask you to authorize the Propel Small Business Loan to be offered year-round on a monthly application basis. And Christina, along with CML Collective, is here as well if you have any questions.
Thank you. Is there questions for staff? See none. Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? If there is not, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to say this is really exciting news. I appreciate the update. This program is beginning to do exactly what it was designed to do and showing that there is a need out in the community for this program. I also want to thank Christina and CML Collector for designing the program, understanding the problem, and working out a solution that, that works to actually address the need. And our team for working through this, all the hurdles, and now these improvements. I think this is going to be a huge help for folks. And one really cool success story from this outside of the first awardee who is continuing to be successful and seeing their progress on social media is earlier this year, I joined Christina over at PMPC that was closing. Mr. White had had that business open for 35 years in our community and was closing and was hoping that somebody would take it over and, and keep it going. Well, somebody did after we talked about it closing, and they are one of the awardees from this. And seeing that business stay in our community and doing what it does is amazing, and this program is helping it. And just grateful that this opportunity was given for the community and, and the impact that it's making. Thank you.
Councilmember, there is no one else on the board at this time for comment, and therefore, would you like to retain the floor to make a motion, given all the hard work you have done for this item?
Yeah, will do. Thank you, Mayor. I move that the city council authorize the Propel program to be offered year-round with monthly application deadlines.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. I've received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Engineering Design Services for Subdivision Improvements.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Mayor and Councilmembers Gary Jansen, Public Works Engineering. The item before you this morning is to discuss the process for engineering design services for subdivision improvements. Quite a bit of information. This is going to feel a little bit boring, and it's probably because it is, but I'll try to keep it exciting for you, so bear with me, please. The contracting of engineering design for public improvements related to new residential development has historically followed administrative regulation 1.10, which allows the developer and the city to mutually agree on a consultant. That design consultant has traditionally been the one that completed the plat, and I'm going to talk more about what plating means and what goes into that. Plating itself is a private transaction, and the property owner, the developer, can hire an engineer at its discretion. So any point in time that a property owner wants to think about new development, they hire an engineer to start working on the plating process. There's quite a few things that go into that that lend itself to that same engineer completing the design for the public improvements, which I'm going to talk about in just a moment. The language within that administrative regulation provides for selection of an engineering consultant for new residential development designed in a manner that does not currently align with Section 2.6402 of the city code regarding the requirements for public bidding. Generally, anything else we do, except for a few exceptions, which I'll talk about in a moment, needs to follow city code as far as selection of designers, especially when the fee is above $50,000. Many development design contracts for new development do exceed that amount. However, within that code, the city council has approved several categories such as for emergencies, sole sourcing, or public exigency that are an exception, which is we're requesting to be done today. This is a little bit busy, but I wanted to show you what a plat generally looks like. And what the plat does with that engineer that's been hired by the developer, it defines property boundaries, specific parcels, identification of rights of way and easements, reserves for develop, develop, future use by the development amongst many other things. The plat approval for, per our subdivision requirements, when this goes to our planning department, approval of that plat requires several guarantees, most specifically that petitions be submitted to cover all future public infrastructure improvements, water, sewer, paving, and drainage. So petitions have to be submitted. Those petitions are prepared by the same engineers. There's a lot of work that goes into that just to get approval of the plat. We need to know if a development's going to move forward in the city, that public infrastructure is guaranteed to happen with that development. What happens during that process, then, the engineer developing that plat must develop a master drainage plan and grading plan that defines the elevations for streets, ponds, homes, and drainage ways. That's specific to being able to develop those petitions for that new public infrastructure. Overall site earthwork for excavation and to know what happens if there's additional dirt that needs to be brought into the site or removed, that's a big cost factor within those petitions. There is some permitting coordination that needs to be done upfront with KDHE, Army Corps of Engineers. Those things need to be, have a preliminary determination upfront because it'll be too late later and, and could make some wholesale changes to the development. Preliminary coordination with utilities is important. There's a lot of other things that go into that, that the engineer, again, that's been selected by the developer, needs to do upfront. So it basically gets them a real head start on starting to design the improvements for this. If they don't move forward, as we have done for a long time, this has been a really effective process. It kind of restarts things at that point. It's going to take a lot longer to get to the point for the projects to get built, for the development to be completed. So it really makes sense what we've done for a long time to allow the plating engineer to complete the development design. What happens then is we end up with a new development that includes all infrastructure that I mentioned before, water, sewer, streets, and drainage. These are, this process has been in place for over 30 years now following the administrative regulation. Our goal today is, is to ask for a recommendation from you to align this with city code. The same consultant being allowed to complete design work for these improvements provides, has provided the most efficient and cost-effective approach again for some time. This rationale has been the basis for exclusive use of the administrative regulation for the plating consultant regardless of the design fee to do that work. However, as I mentioned before, that administrative regulation has never had underlying ordinance authority. So there's three options for your consideration today. The first option being, we can have the design consultants selected for new development improvements. We can do that competitively to, per the city code for any contracts expected to exceed $50,000. So that is option one. If the council chooses to go that way, we expect that that will add at least six weeks to the current process, delaying moving forward with developments. And that's probably at a minimum because we haven't tried this, but with what it takes to go through that process, it's going to definitely add some time. Option two, and I'll save reading through all of this, option two would allow the selection of the plating consultant to do the work, but it would still require city council approval. So it would not be a competitive process, but if the city council so chooses, we could still come before the city council to let you know who's been selected to do the work. It's going to be the plating engineer. Allow the city council to make that decision. We expect that that will add at least two or three weeks to the process, and it's probably even a little bit more than that, but it would allow the plating engineer to move forward with the work. Option three, which is our preferred option, is to allow the purchasing manager or staff to approve the selection as has been done now, to change the language within the code that says that the selection will be made per administrative regulation. That is our recommendation to you today. As I mentioned before, this has been done for some time. We would not always hang our hat on that and, and recommend something to you that needs to be done just because that's the way we've always done it, but this has proven to work quite well. It's been very efficient. It allows development to move forward. One of the things I did not mention is when the plating engineer, and, and a lot of these engineers work very closely with these developers over time, they're allowed to do this work, they're actually able to get a head start on some of the design work even prior to contracts being approved. Now, they're taking a risk. It's their own risk doing that, but with that relationship that the developer and the engineer has, they can actually get even further ahead on this. That's something that they choose to do. That's their prerogative. That's not something that the city council necessarily has to worry about within your consideration here, but it's been done for a long time, and it really adds a value to this process. Proposed amendment, option three, would allow developers to continue planning and scheduling for new development design as they have for over 30 years, utilizing an engineering consultant most familiar with the plat and the proposed improvements. Approval of option three would maintain current efficiency by permitting the contract to proceed upon purchasing manager approval in the manner allowed by several other existing ordinance exceptions. There are no financial considerations associated with this ordinance because, again, everything we're talking about here is cost, and it's special assessed to the development. Staff recommend city council approve option three, place the ordinance on first reading, and authorize necessary signatures. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, first question is the, according to the agenda, the staff's recommendation is to approve option two, not option three. So can you, can you speak to that?
Well, I will tell you, and I should have double-checked. We did make a change to this item last week, and I think it, it was in time to get the revised item to the council, but now I'm concerned whether the revised item got to council or not.
Councilmember Frye.
I believe it did. I think you're looking at an old agenda. The final agenda has it as option three.
And I do apologize for that because this was a fairly late change last week in working with law. We were kind of scrambling to make sure we had this right.
Yeah, the green sheet says option three.
So I have both agendas in front of me. One of them is the yellow one, which is usually the first draft. That says option two. I have the white copy. It's revised consent items. Two dash six have been moved to the new business, which means this is revised after Friday because Friday, that was the agenda meeting in which there was a request to have the item pulled. But I know that this agenda predates or, or postdates Friday's meeting. We didn't have work on Monday, so is there a third agenda floating around here that might have came sometime between, started the meeting today and yesterday? And if so...
There would not have been anything during that time.
I was looking at the green sheet, sir.
All right, so, so it does say option two. That was, that was a discussion at first, the, the leaning, the leaning of staff was for option two, and now that is for option three? Or was option two always a typo?
We, we added, no, I will tell you what happened. We started off with two options. The original option two is what you're considering as option three today. We added another option in the middle. Originally, option one was still what you see today, competitive process, followed what the city code says. Originally, option two was, was what we're recommending today, is that the city council allow us to continue the process we have. We added a middle option that would allow the council to still approve the selection of an engineer. It would be the plating engineer that created three, and I, I apologize for the confusion. Both items were still asking for a recommendation of effectively the same option.
In case there was more confusion by what Gary just said, the third option is the option that we are recommending, and that is what previously had been listed as option two.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, because both, both the pre-agenda and the final agenda has, the order is option one, option three, option two.
Right.
In that order, so option two here, you're referring to the second option that's listed, which is actually titled option three.
Yes, sir. And I apologize.
So the options, when, when the motion is made, if you're in concurrence with staff recommendation, it should be to approve option three, place the ordinance on first reading, authorize necessary signatures.
My only concern is the, over the last few days, the public has been assuming that option two as, is the one that staff recommends as, as a literal translation of, of the, the text here, so I don't...
Well, and I... Well, and I, again, I apologize, Mr. Mayor. The packet that I saw at the agenda review on Friday has the item that I'm looking at now with the three options, but maybe, so hopefully add agenda review.
It's just the typo on, Mayor, it's just the typo on the agenda itself. The staff report is accurate and as it was, as it recommends option three.
Uh, council member Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a point of clarification on that. Option three would remove the competitive bidding?
It would. Correct. Right now, the process does not include competitive bidding because the plating engineer moves forward with the work. Option three would maintain the current process and would not include competitive bidding. Correct.
Okay. Are we seeing any expansion of vendors working on this, or is it kind of the same folks all the time?
You know, it varies. We've seen, um, we've seen a pretty broad group of engineers that work on these plats. With the developers that do the most work, they're fairly consistent on the engineers that they utilize, and I think it kind of makes sense for them to do that because of familiarity with the type of development that they're doing. But it's been fairly broad. We'll see different areas of town, depending on the type of development, that, that we'll see new engineers get involved in this. And, and I'd be happy to get you more information on that.
Thank you. Can you go back to slide 51? This is option one, option two. Option three, as you indicated, keeps it relatively where it is now, but it's, it's a non-competitive bid process at that point. And these are the other two options. And I want to make sure that folks who came in here with the idea that we might be going with option two, but how it's recommended to go with option three, know what the other options are. So...
I'm happy to run back through these three real quick, Mayor, if you'd like.
Sure.
On, on these two slides. Option one would allow a competitive selection process, would be consistent with the city code on how we solicit vendors to design new improvements for projects generally across the board except for new development. So that would put in place what the city code recommends right now. Option two, which would be a non-competitive selection process, the plating engineer would still be the selected engineer for the process. Technically, what it would be is an engineer that the city and the developer agree to. That's what the administrative regulation says by default. That has almost always been, in fact, I don't know the time that it hasn't been, the plating engineer. But what that does is it allows that selection to still come before the city council. While it's a non-competitive solicitation, it allows the city council to still approve hiring of the plating engineer for those services. Option three then follows the current process. It changes the language within the city code to effectively say that engineers being hired for new development services will be done so in a manner that follows the administrative regulation. That puts us in compliance with the code that would allow the process, if you choose to recommend that option today, that would allow the process to continue as it has for, for some time now.
Further questions for staff? See none. Thank you. Input from the public on this item.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Civil Stone, 326 North Walnut. Why are the taxpayers paying for this? Again, you guys are taking our money away. I'm getting tired of it. I have had it with this. When you want a building put up, the taxpayers pay for it. The stadium was made, the taxpayers paid for it. Do you think we're rich? Do you think we have a lot of money? You guys are up there, you get a big salary. Don't tell me you don't. You get a lot of money. There are people out there that are getting $10 an hour. How much are you getting? Probably more than $10 an hour. I mean, why do you do this? Do you think you're making waves? No. You're hurting the taxpayers every day. You need to quit. We have the say so. We can vote you in or we can vote you out, and some of you commissioners and mayor are, might get voted out. Thank you.
Further input? All right. If there's no further public input, then we'll go ahead and bring discussion back to the bench. I think there, there is much to discuss here, so let's go ahead and recognize council member Ballard. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if I like the idea of eliminating other people to participate and just allowing the developer and staff to handpick who they decide. So I don't know if I like the idea of discouraging other people to participate in the competitive
Which brings up a fairly, a fairly important question. If option three is how staff has been handling this in general, then why are these three options being presented to us and then the recommendations for option three? Is this to make the current practice official, to, to have the policy match the current practice? Or is, is this just to have open discussion about it?
Well, and I, I apologize again. I, you know, I made the comment upfront that this might be a little bit hard to follow, and I didn't mean to truly make it hard to follow, but I'll mention again, the, how things go from the very start. Because it's a private transaction where a developer can select whoever they want to prepare the plat, that's not something that the city, I don't think, that we want to get involved in because if we don't get involved from the start, that's where the challenge lies, and I'll explain why here in just a second. The, a lot of times, a developer, someone who owns a piece of land, a landowner, we don't even have to call them a developer, may want to pursue plating a property and, and it never happens. They never finish what they're doing. Things change. The economy takes a change. 2008, 2009, there was a lot of plating going on at the time that literally just stopped. It didn't even slow down, and there were things that were left in limbo. At that point in time, that's still a private transaction between that property owner and that developer, and there's nothing to pursue. So I might mention again a few of the things that I talked about. Because of the in-depth work that needs to be done by that engineer just to get approval of the plat, it makes a lot of sense within our subdivision regulations that approve that plat. Petitions have to be submitted that are going to guarantee that public water and sewer will be extended, that drainage will be built, and that streets will be built. We have developments in our community still within the core of the city now that are not always served by water, not served by sewer. Some don't have paved streets because those regulations were not in place at the time. So it makes sense for new development that all public infrastructure has to be guaranteed. That's by special assessment, meaning if people that live in the development are going to pay for those improvements. The effort that it takes to develop that information and those petitions is what I had talked about. I know that was a lot of information, but it gets them so far into the design already. It's just not practical, number one, that if we went through an open solicitation process that anyone else is going to have more information or have any type of advantage to do that design work. We could certainly go through that process. It can be done, but it's not likely, based on his history that we've looked at on developing projects similar to this that are not new development, that you'll even get any other engineers even interested in the work because they know how much has been done already to prepare those petitions. We can absolutely try that process. I will tell you that we expect it will add at least six weeks to the process right now. As you know, it's a competitive market within the residential housing development arena. The council recently considered a process by which we would allow 20-year specials for two years. That's for that same reason. There's a push to try to continue development on the residential housing side to increase our supply. This would slow the process down if the council chooses to go through a competitive process. We have found this to work. We think this works really well. And working with our law department, we figured out that this is not aligned with current city code for solicitation of contracts. That's why we're here today to ask city council to look at one of those three options. I think, we think it makes sense for option three to move forward because it's worked really, really well for a long time. It provides the most efficiency. It provides the best cost savings long-term. There's another factor there, too. If one engineer does all the preliminary work to develop the petitions for the plating and the competitive solicitation process selects another engineer, it is going to add fairly significant cost to the overall development at that time. Our biggest concern is the timing and what that does to the process. We've got a fair number of developers in this community that have been doing development here for a long time. We see new developers that come in too, that aren't as familiar with the process, but they have realized that this works well for them, and it's predictable, and it's something that they're used to doing. And, and, and I don't want to speak for the development community, but I know that they've come to enjoy this process, and it's something that's really helped them plan for the future. So I, I hope that helps some, but again, the, there's so much engineering work that goes in preliminarily to proving the plat. That's why this has made sense for so long to continue with that same engineer.
Council member, do you have a follow-up? So just a couple questions based off the information that you just provided. Where is the six-week estimate coming from? How'd you guys determine that?
Based on our experience with other solicitations of hiring consultants for design work on arterial streets, water and sewer projects, whatever it might be, everything outside of new development, we do follow what's in the city code for solicitation of vendors for any contracts that expect to be over $50,000. So we've got a long history of looking at the timing of that process, preparing a request for proposals or qualifications, the advertising for that, and that cuts, getting that done in six weeks, you would have to cut down the advertising for the solicitation to a bare minimum, probably to one or two weeks for advertising. By the time those come back in, staff screening and selection committee has to review the proposals. We have to convene the committee to interview consultants, make a selection, then it has to come back before the city council. So even talking through it right there, I don't think we have much chance of even making it in six weeks. It's probably more like two to three months. We would do everything we could to expedite that, but I would tell you again, our expectation based on things that we've seen outside of new development, it's highly unlikely that we would see anyone even submit to want to design a development that another engineer has already completed the plating for and prepared the petitions for because of all the work that already went into that. We can certainly give it a try. We wouldn't be gaining much if we went through a solicitation process wherein the plating engineer was the only engineer who submitted, and I can't obviously predict that. It makes sense that that's probably how it would work out, though.
And that's one of my concerns, I guess, with the six-week estimate is the way you described the process that could take six weeks or longer is different than the idea that no one will probably apply. So I, I guess my, my concern is, which is it? Is it, we're going to have all this time to go through these applications, put together the committee, interview folks, figure out which is presenting the best plan, and that I can understand would take the time? Or is it really, this is so specialized that we, we probably wouldn't have any applicants anyways?
I, again, the latter part of that is my, is my guess, based on experience and time that we've done this over the years on different types of projects. When you look at non-development type projects, and if you've got an engineer that's been involved with the area, if they've done adjacent development, if they've been in, involved in a past design concept, a lot of times you'll see them be the only engineer who will submit. I think it will take us that six to eight weeks, whether anybody submits or not. Even if it's one engineer that submits, we still will go through the process. We typically would engine, uh, we would typically would still interview them. It still has to come to the city council. The second part of that is, is our estimation of what probably happens with this process, but I, I, you know, I can't guarantee that either.
Council member Ballard.
Mayor, thank you for explaining that a little bit more. I guess my biggest concern is, I just want to make sure that one or two or three companies isn't getting all of the work because it's not a compet, it's not a competitive bid. Like, I understand what you're saying. They've already put in a lot of the work. I just want to make sure that we're giving everybody the opportunity. Does that make sense?
It, it does, but I, I do have to tell you, that's the part we cannot control within this process. It's going to depend on the relationships between the developers and the engineering community. There are several developers that do a lot of the development in our community, and they're fairly consistent with the engineers that they hire. I have seen them make changes. They've moved around. Some of them have enough work going on that they hire multiple engineers, but just to be clear, if the council were to choose to move forward with the current process as it is now, that part is hard for us to control of how widespread the work will be because it's still going to be dependent on the developer hiring an engineer to start for the plating process.
Thank you.
We do provide, I will tell you real quick, we do provide feedback to developers on how well the engineers are doing. Just because they hire the engineer up front doesn't mean that we just allow them to do whatever it is that they want to do. If they're not doing quality work, if we're having issues, we have spent time with developers in the past and recommended that they might consider another engineer, and that's been done. So I want to make sure everybody understands, we still do have oversight of the work that the, they're under contract to the city. The type of work that they're doing, the quality of the work that they're doing still has to meet our standards because this is ultimately public infrastructure that we own and maintain.
Further questions or discussion with staff? See none at this time. Thank you. We'll continue our discussion on the bench on this item. Well, I have to say, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with the idea of option three and not having council oversight. I understand staff has their oversight as well, but we're not able, per our charter, to, to talk to staff directly about progress and how, how things are going. And because of that, if we stick with option three, we, we also, when it comes to our constituents having complaints, we, we really don't know who's doing what at that point because it hasn't come through the, at least with the approval of the council. So I, I personally believe that out of the three options, option two seems the most, the, the most of a compromise, where it allows staff to still be really leading, driving the car, I guess, when it comes to determining the, the process, but at least it has that, that council oversight. We would approve the, we, we would make approvals as we move forward. So my contribution as discussion is I, I'm leaning more towards option two than, than three, and I think there's some evidence of that where we had a member actually ask about some of the details of these contracts, who, who's been here, serving a second term, which means that, you know, by not having it come before the council, the council is somewhat left in the dark on this. Is there further discussion? If there's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to approve option two, place the ordinance on first read and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second? Council member Frye.
I'd like to make a substitute motion to, that the council place the ordinance on first reading and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Substitute motion has been made. My understanding is if this fails, then we're back on the item. Is that correct?
Yes, unless there's a second to your motion. That's correct.
Excellent. Okay, I'll be voting no on this motion. Okay, I'll be voting no on this motion. Having received four nay votes, that substitute motion does fail. Back to the item. I make a motion to approve option two. Place the ordinance on first reading and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second? Councilmember, are you speaking to my motion?
No, I'm sorry. I thought you withdrew. Sorry.
No, we're back on the item. I need a second.
Second.
Motion has been made and then seconded by councilmember Ballard. Clerk Rolf and Roll members will cast their vote. Having received four yea votes, that motion does pass for option two. Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry. I see that as three yays, four nays. Am I reading that wrong?
Oh.
That's what I see also. So it doesn't.
All right, so it doesn't pass. Do we, the item at that point, I think, is, has been defeated and therefore, and therefore option three goes without the consent of the council, if I'm understanding this correctly because that is current practice? Madam Clerk? And I will remind a body, this is the first read. Actually, it doesn't even get on for a second read, so we'll have to figure this out later. Madam Clerk, next item.
Restructure of Water Pumping and Production Division with Salary and Classification Ordinance Revisions.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Alan King, Director of Public Works and Utilities, bringing forward a proposed ordinance for classifications and wages for some specific positions in the Public Works Department, namely the Production and Pumping Division. That's where the folks that run the water treatment plant, excuse me, for here in the city. The background for this is when we contemplated building the new water treatment plant to replace the existing water treatment plant, very early on, we looked at what the needs would be for that water treatment plant to actually be run, what the staffing and equipment needs would be. And that was a fairly in-depth effort, recognizing that with the new water treatment plant, you've got a lot more components, equipment, assets. This is a fully redundant water treatment plant. It's like a water treatment plant built within a water treatment plant. And that was by design. We didn't want to have a single point of failure. The technology that is associated with this treatment plant also is very different than the 80-year-old treatment plant that we presently have. A lot more data to collect and to analyze, and the needs for the operators, the training required for the operators to run this new water treatment plant is significantly greater. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to position the city for the long-term future to make sure that we have the right staff with the right training, doing the right work in this new water treatment plant. Along with this, we also have challenges, as almost all industries here in this country do, facing recruitment, retirement, and retention of staff. This is particularly exacerbated in this group, the Division of Pumping. We have operators, a lot of whom are getting close to retirement age, and it's very, it's been very difficult for us to attract people with this kind of licensing because it's not just a matter of what they know and the training. They actually have to have particular licenses that are issued that allow them to be the operator in charge for these treatment plants. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to look at all the needs of the new water treatment plant and then also look at the challenges facing us that the employees that will be staffing this plant have, recognizing that also that we need to have some cross-training and so that the number of tasks that people are expected to be able to do are greater so we can have a more efficient workforce. Very early on, when we looked at this water treatment plant, the estimate was that we would need 10 new positions for the water treatment plant. And we thought, well, okay, you know, we better look at ways that we can reduce that number through the automation of the treatment plant itself and then also other sorts of ways that we can reduce that number. That's a big number to add for the new water treatment plant. What we did was, we came up with a different approach of mixture of different practices. And the one way we could do it is by keeping the existing staff that we have now, the existing positions, classifications, and we would supplement them with outsourced contract labor. And that worked out to be a big number as far as what that would cost. Conservative estimates are that it would be, it would be, excuse me for fumbling around here, it would be $2.1 million more than what we're proposing, and that would translate into a 1.75% sewer utility, excuse me, water utility rate increase greater than what we've been proposing and sharing with the council to date. So we've come to what we're talking about today, which is a different way of staffing this new water treatment plant. Right now, you have different positions with their own individual classifications and pay scales. That's defined by the ordinances that we have now. It's in the contract that we have with our union. A lot of these, most of these positions are represented positions of the SEIU union. What we'd like to do instead is align in functional areas, broad functional areas, what we need from our staff, and then have a way that we could position people within those classifications and provide them with the wages that reflect their competency. This makes the level of pay much more objective. It can be demonstrated with actual certifications earned, tests taken and passed. And so it takes a lot of the subjectivity about the kind of evaluation that occurs now for setting, for promoting people into higher-paying positions. It also gives a opportunity for people to advance, and they don't have to wait for a position in a higher classification for that person to have to leave or retire or move on. And then there's a process, a competitive process of who's going to get that position. Now, anybody can move into that sort of a position as long as they demonstrate the skills that they have necessary. This, what we're talking about with this new approach gives us much greater depth. And now we're only talking about three new positions instead of the 10. It's a much more efficient way of doing the work, and it's rate neutral. In other words, the rates that we've been showing you folks, projection, the rate projections, it covers the costs associated with this approach. So that's what we're here talking about. We can go into the specifics if you'd like. I also have with me the Mr. Chris Bezrouki, Director of Human Resources, here to talk about a little of the practical considerations as far as the union contract is concerned. And then also, we have with us today, Mr. Esau Freeman, who represents the union.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Chris Bezrouki, Director of Director. So what we're doing is we're asking to amend the current salary and classing ordinance to allow for those new positions. And we're coming to you at this early part of the year because there, again, as Alan has already stated, it's very hard to recruit for some of these positions. So we'd like to go ahead, get them started this fiscal year and get them trained on how to operate the plant.
So Mr. Freeman is not staff. He represents staff, but we'll have him speak during this portion in case, if you would like, unless you're just here in support.
Oh, I don't show up unless I want to talk, so.
That's what I figured, so.
Invite. So we do think this is a good idea for the employees because it does give them an opportunity to move up at a faster pace. And I think that a pilot project in this area is good. You know, we want to keep Alan off the news. He's been getting a little too much airtime lately, and I think this will probably help alleviate some of those issues. But in general, you know, I'll speak a little bit further that, you know, I think we're showing that they're hiring three staff instead of 10, and that leads me to a little bigger point, that you guys are understaffed in a lot of areas. That needs to be taken care of, and a lot of that has to do with raising the wages for the employees. And, you know, this is an opportunity to incentivize people to move forward in this area, but as you think and plan ahead and look at budgets, you know, our water, drinking water is very important. The fact that our sewers don't back up is very important, and we need to really look at a lot of these public works and parks projects and things like that and make sure that we're hiring people in that are competent to do the job. And I like this particular way of doing things because it helps to alleviate some of the good old boy system, fishing buddies getting hired and moved into positions, and this really lays it out for the fact that the individual doing the job is competent to do the job. And so we are in support of this and would recommend that the board go ahead and approve it when asked. And if you have any questions for me, I've always got answers. So.
You always reply, well, to the question.
I've got an answer. You may not like it, but I've got an answer.
We appreciate you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Is there any question for staff or for those who represent staff? See none. We'll open this up to public discussion. Is there further input in the public on this item?
Celeste Rossette. I wholeheartedly endorse this. When I was a manager in my 25-year banking career, allowing someone to have a certification shows that they care about their job. They're doing this on their own to better themselves, to gain the knowledge. The only thing I would say is not only approve this, but with the internal audit position, I'm a little disappointed you didn't ask for someone who has a certified internal audit designation because that also is an important sign that shows whoever fills the internal audit position has proven themselves in a previous employment position and gotten a certification designation. So I'm all for certification for recognizing employees. Hope you approve it.
All right. Further discussion from the public? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench for the further discussion on this item. All right. If there is no further discussion on this item, then I would make the motion to accept staff's recommended action, place the ordinance on first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and authorize staff to make technical adjustments to position titles to implement the ordinance and reorganization. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk Rolf and Roll. Having received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Quarterly financial report for the quarter ended March 31, 2022.
Good morning, Mayor. Members of the city council. Mark Manning with the Department of Finance. Today, I want to present to you the financial report for the first quarter of 2020.
We'll take a five-minute recess.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Again, Mark Manning with the Department of Finance. Today, I'm going to present the financial report for the first quarter of 2022. Just a reminder, the financial report reports unaudited financial activity, in this case, through March 31 of 2022. We'll do a couple of things with the data this morning. We'll compare it back to the adopted budget. A reminder, you adopted that budget back in August of last year, but we'll also compare it to some more recent guidance that we provided you through the budget process for next year. And finally, we'll use today as kind of an opportunity to kind of look at some of the trends that are occurring and how we think that might impact our future financial performance. So my key points today are that we had a very good quarter in the first quarter of 2022. Our revenues were up from one year ago, which is what we would have expected, and it also compares very favorably to the budget that you adopted, again, last August. But again, it also compares very favorably with the guidance that we've been providing this spring. Again, there's some recent economic issues that we think could have an impact on us later into this year and maybe into next year. Spoiler alert, that's the monetary policy by the Federal Reserve that has happened in the last several months, we'll get to in just a minute. So we collected about $6.6 million more in the first quarter than we did last year, so we had a very good quarter. Again, that's to be expected. First quarters are generally pretty good. Most of our increases were in property tax due to valuation increases, sales tax, which we'll talk about in a little bit more detail in a minute, and franchise fees. Franchise fees, if you drill down a little bit more, was primarily on natural gas. Of course, natural gas is largely consumed during the winter, which is the first quarter, and commodity pricings in natural gas is impacting our franchise fees very positively there. We had a couple of areas where we underperformed. Again, we expected both of these. Interest earnings and court revenues were both lower than what we collected last year. Again, that was consistent with our previous guidance and something we expected. So I wanted to drill down on sales tax. We've talked a lot about sales tax in last year or so. Our sales tax in the first quarter was 16% higher than one year ago, and I'm going to show you a chart on the next slide that shows you how this is unprecedented. We are in an unprecedented time in sales tax. Our current estimate for 2022 is about $38 million. We think that'll be about 11% over what we collected in 2021, which is about a little north of $35 million. Again, sales tax has a lot of pressure from, I think, stimulus spending and also inflation, but we're also concerned, looking out a little further, what could happen if inflation subsides and particularly if the Fed is not successful with their soft-landing approach. Now, just a reminder, we've had a sales tax in the county since, I think, 1985. City, of course, does not have a sales tax. We get a distribution from that. In 1985, when it was passed, the city council made two pledges, both of which they've kept to this day. One was to reduce the property tax in the city of Wichita, and in 1986, the city actually did reduce the property tax by about seven and a half mils, which has continued on to this day. The second pledge was that we would use it for roads, bridges, and freeways, which, I guess, which, of course, we've also consistently done since 1986. So this chart shows you the month, or year-over-year monthly increase in sales tax. And to digest it really simply, the takeaway is until about 2020, we generally fluctuated between 0 and 5%. Average about 3%. You can see the great financial crisis over there on the left-hand side. We had negative growth. Again, that's very typical during a recession. But look at what happened in the right-hand side after 2020. We did not expect this. We expected to dive below the line when the pandemic first occurred, and that did not happen. We certainly did not expect to see 15%, 20% year-over-year growth. Again, just totally unprecedented. To give you a little context, from 2012 to 2020, our sales tax grew by $4 million. Eight years, we got $4 million in growth. In 2021, we got $4 million of growth over the prior year. We think in 2022, we will have $4 million growth over the prior year. So very unprecedented time, and that's what that chart is showing you. Now, I don't think that line is going to stay at that elevated position. In fact, it's already started to dip a little bit. We expect that to go back into normal. So going forward, we do not expect 11% annual increases in sales tax growth, and that will impact our forecast going forward. We're also, you know, we'll be tracking, obviously, the economy to see if we go into recession and how that could impact our sales tax. and how that could impact our sales tax. Final point I'll make on sales tax is we use a lot of other sources. We coordinate Wichita State University. We also monitor the state of Kansas, who has a consensus revenue forecasting group that meets twice a year. They obviously have better data than we do, so we track what they do very carefully. And I think what we've done is pretty consistent with what both of those sources would also have. Let's look at interest earnings a little bit, and then I'll accelerate the pace a little bit. Again, they were down in the first quarter. It's totally what we expected because interest rates were flat and effectively zero in 2021. Now, just a reminder, we invest our idle funds, and that investment is based on three priorities. Safety is the number-one priority. The number-two priority is liquidity, so we have enough money to pay our bills. Earnings is only our third priority. But we do generate earnings on our idle funds. And based on our current monetary policy here in the United States, interest earnings are growing rapidly and are going to accelerate rapidly into 2023. To give you an idea here how volatile interest earnings are and how high they can get when interest rates are higher, you can see the dip again during the great financial crisis when rates went basically to zero. We had some really flat years there from '12, '13, and '14. You can see the impact whenever the Fed started to normalize interest rates, and we collected $10 million, I think in 2018 or 19. I don't remember which year. Look at the burnt orange line down there. That's what we, that's the guidance we had previously provided you. We thought that we would stay around $1 million a year. Again, that was based on Federal Reserve policy of last year, which was a federal funds rate of basically 0%. Well, the, the dark line there, I'm going to call it brown. The brown line is what we now expect to happen with interest earnings. And again, that's based on Federal Reserve rate increases. We think that we'll collect about another $5 million in 2023 compared to what we previously told you. Now, we'll point out that interest earnings is kind of a shaky foundation upon which to base your long-term forecast, as you can see by the volatility in this model. But I think it's pretty clear that we will collect a lot more in interest earnings over the next couple of years. Again, I'll accelerate a little bit. Briefly, expenditures are about 2.2, 2.4 million over last quarter, which is pretty consistent with what we would have expected. General, in the general fund, public safety continues to be our priority with about 61% of our expenditures allocated to public safety. So takeaway, in the general fund, again, we continue to outperform, but it is a volatile area. Sales tax, interest earnings, and natural gas, franchise fees particularly. So it's good we're outperforming. It's a little bit disconcerting that there's some volatility in those areas in which we're outperforming. We expect inflation to continue to have an impact on expenditures. We heard a little bit about that with the previous item, but we're also seeing inflationary pressures in fuel and in materials. And finally, based on the condition of the general fund, we expect to need less ARPA to support the general fund over the next several years. We talked a lot about that a year ago and the level of general fund support we might need and the level of reserves and how fluid that number would be. So things are trending in the right direction, and we think we will need less ARPA to sustain the general fund. And I'll come back to that here in about two slides. First, our bonded debt. Just briefly, our bonded debt ended the first quarter at about $1.07 billion. That's an increase from where we ended the year in December, most of which was attributable to our water and sewer utility, which is the, I think it's kind of violet colored, the 50% pie slice. That's our water and sewer utility debt, which is growing, which we expected to grow with the completion of the Northwest Treatment Plant. Finally, today, I wanted to give you a little ARPA update. We've talked a lot about ARPA, but I just wanted to give you a big-picture update on that. Again, we've been allocated $72.4 million. So far, about $19.4 that has been committed or approved specifically by the city council. And we would expect maybe another $14 million maybe coming to you in July, particularly for infrastructure projects. So the first column shows what was adopted as the conceptual plan back, back in August of last year. Again, you've allocated $15 million for affordable housing, workforce development, and small business development. We have a small infrastructure project for the fire department that's been approved, and a few other odds and ends. But the takeaway on this chart is we believe that the general fund support needed will be about $12.7 million going forward, based on our current guidance. So that'll free up ARPA funds that could be allocated to other purposes, for example, infrastructure, which was something we talked about at the last retreat. Again, we're performing well. We have some volatility in the future, which should positively impact us in the short term, but we're always concerned about the long term. We still have some sustainability issues post 2024. We think less ARPA will be required to support the general fund. And finally, I'd like to point out that the quarterly report is available online at www.wichita.gov. With that, Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sure. I'd like to just, I guess, hypothesis, if you will. In my previous life, when I served on a tax committee, the sales tax was most volatile, toughest to really pinpoint. And here, it seems like that's still the case. However, we always had some ideas of what we thought was happening. Just on your professional opinions, what do you think with the sales tax? Is it because we're collecting online transactions now, or is it because we're seeing folks who are buying more for a particular reason? What would be your, I guess, hypothesis on why that's off?
Yeah, I think there's four reasons, two of which you mentioned. I think the legislative changes on internet sales is definitely helping us. Our local economy is pretty, pretty in good, pretty good shape, which is helping us. I think the federal stimulus definitely is helping the sales tax. And finally, mathematically, inflation is increasing the cost of goods sold, which are taxable, which is increasing our sales tax revenue. So I would attribute it to those four.
Thank you. Questions for staff? See none. Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item?
Welcome back. Celeste Rossette. It's good news, and I want to pay a compliment to finance staff. For the first time, under capital project funds, there is a description on star bond debt and how we are using Riverwalk Star District sales tax in the construction fund. So thank you for starting to add the detail I've said has been missing from our financial reports. I appreciate seeing this improvement. It's actually on page nine of capital projects funds. I'm glad to see this description. Thank you. There are a couple of questions I have, and I know I probably won't get the answers today. But I would like to just point out a couple of things that caught my eye anyway. The debt bond covenants require reserve to be held to cover the upcoming principal and interest payments. And one question I would ask about that is we have a large amount in temporary notes. So I know we're planning to spend, I could be wrong on the amount, roughly $50 million in bond debt. And I'm drawing a blank on what that was that we were planning to finance in such a big amount this year. Another question I had is I noticed we haven't recognized any of the planned savings in cultural arts, which was $1 million, or non-departmental, which was $2 million, or in public works, which was another $1 million. And perhaps that's a timing difference. I just know that caught my eye. We haven't met any of that planned savings. The general fund reserve for economic development has dropped off significantly, and at the same time, expenses are higher. That also caught my eye because, you know, I pay attention to our TIF, CID, and star bond districts, and I wondered why the income was dropping off. Another thing I noticed is that the debt service fund expense is only $1.7 million when the budgeted amount, like I said, for year-end is $60 million. So what debt are we planning to incur? Temporary notes are budgeted at $138 million. I know that's going to transition into this permanent debt. I'd like to know what it is. I would love to see a description for the transient guest tax debt because, again, that's nothing for Century Two or any cultural facility. That's where the Waterwalk Fairfield Inn, for Jim Corrick's private hotel. But I'm sure over time, I'll see these descriptions I would like to see in the financial statements. And the last note I wanted to point out is that the revenue for the Tourism and Convention Fund is growing, but it appears to be less than budgeted. Keep in mind that Visit Wichita gets all of the T-bid, and we've signed a contract where they get part of the Tourism and Convention Fund. So if we don't meet expectations, let's start looking at Visit Wichita expenses. As I've said before, they could eliminate rent of about $300,000 if they moved into the empty library. So let's keep that in mind, that there are ways to cut their expenses. My final request, and I've mentioned this to staff before, is I really do believe now that we have a new CPA firm, it would be worth our time to ask them to issue an opinion on star bond debt. In particular, the $42 million stadium debt is special. It's got a backup requirement in the underwriting statement where local sales tax must be appropriated and made available. And I'm not sure if you're all aware of this, but when you approve the budget, you're going to be saying yes or no to that appropriation. And this extra backstop requirement, I think, requires reporting as legal debt obligation. But I'm not a CPA. I'll admit that right now. I'm a CIA, and I'm also a former bank examiner. But I would say when you have a new CPA firm, ask them to issue an opinion. It shouldn't cost much, and it should be something they do as a service for getting our business. That's it. Thank you for adding the descriptions. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Further input from the public?
Yeah, finally, you say that. I'd like to know why every time I get up here, you treat me like dirt. You do.
So just real quick, we're going to, we're going to restart your time, but I need to just get this out here. When we do the public forum for a discussion on an item, we have to talk about the item. Please refrain from personal attacks. Please refrain from getting, I guess, off-topic. Please allow us to continue to move the meeting forward. Okay, so we're going to put your time back on, and we can start over as far as the input. Clerk, please reset her time.
Okay. My name is Sybil Strom. I reside at 326 North Womack. I think you guys need to stop taking money from the taxpayers. And your quarterly deal, you need to let the taxpayers know what is going on with this annual, annual deal. We, you want to know what the taxpayers are saying? They're saying, stop taking money from the taxpayers. But the quarterly fund, you talk about the fire department, you talk about the police. I know what you're talking about. And you talk about all the salaries. Well, we want to know about that. We want to know the information. We have the right to know. And we also inform you guys that you say this is a public forum. Why is it when some people get up, you don't want us to get up? I mean, I just want to know that. I mean, I've been doing this stuff since 1984, and I'm going to be doing it forever. But the quarterly fund, like she was saying, the taxpayers need to know where the money's going, why is it going, and so forth. See, I'm not a three-pager. I speak from the heart. You come up, you let so many people speak, they speak three pages, or four pages, or two. I just speak from the heart. I don't like that. You know, I think it's okay that some people talk about quarterly and all that. But the taxpayers need to know where the money's going. So thank you.
Thank you. Further input from the public? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? All right. Well, I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to receive and file the quarterly financial report for the quarter ended March 31, 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast their vote. Ever received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Amendments to sections 4.12.50, 4.16.60, and 4.16.154 of the Code of the City of Wichita pertaining to temporary alcohol permits.
Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And good morning, Mayor and council members. My name is Nate Johnson, Assistant City Attorney. I here for something a little shorter than last week. We've got a few amendments to Title IV, our alcohol regulations here. There were some changes at the state level recently, and basically, we're trying to put city code consistent with the rules for cereal malt beverage permits and temporary alcohol permits. And like I said, just bringing that into compliance with the state statutes. Basically, three things are happening. The first is the cereal malt beverage permit requirements. A few of those were taken out at the state level, so we're doing the same thing in the city code. We've got a temporary permit change where the fee is reduced from $80 in the city code that we currently have to $25. But on the flip side, you can get 12 of those temporary permits now instead of four, and we're changing that number under the city code as well. Based on that change in state law, then, we're recommending that city council place these ordinance amendments on the first reading and authorize all necessary signatures. And open for any questions as well. Thank you.
We'll open up to questions for staff. Is there a rough estimate on the financial note for, for reducing those permits?
And my apologies, Mayor. In the agenda report, it should note that I believe we had eight temporary permits that were issued last year. So it would be about $440 less. On the flip side, we do hope maybe some of those permities will apply for more permits. So it should level out, but be maybe a couple hundred dollars less.
Wonderful. Any attendance to hopefully have more folks who would apply for these and thus create more commerce.
Exactly.
Very good. Is there any questions for staff? See none. Thank you. Is there any input from the public on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item from the bench? If there is no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to place the proposed ordinance on first read and authorize necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast their vote. Ever received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Amendments to Title XI of the Code of the City of Wichita pertaining to driving offenses.
Good morning.
Good morning. Sharon DeGraff, City Law Department. On the agenda today are a number of changes to Title XI, which is the city code relating to traffic offenses. The majority of these are changes to bring us into compliance with state law. During the past legislative sessions, a number of changes were made. These amendments are in order to bring them into compliance with state law and a few technical corrections in our code. The ordinance regarding transporting an open container is amended due to a codification error when the ordinance is relating to cereal malt beverage were changed. That change in numbering did not get carried over to Title XI. Ordinances relating to license plates are also amended to bring it into compliance with state law. Certain types of vehicles, in particular concrete mixers and dump trucks, may attach their licenses to either the front or the back of the vehicle. 1137 is amended regarding funeral processions. There are more directions as to that drivers need to yield to funeral processions, and that if you're part of a procession, that you should proceed together, not less than 300 feet, so that you don't have big gaps in funeral processions. Lastly, 1116 regarding evade and elude is that it requires the actions to be taken knowingly by drivers so that they can't be an accidental or unintentional conduct. These ordinance bring, the ordinances into compliance with state statutes. It's recommended that you place the ordinances on first reading and authorize any necessary signatures.
Questions for staff? See none. Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? Councilmember Hoheisel.
All right.
Who might have a question for staff. I think I...
I just snuck in there at the end. I sneaked in like that, I guess. Just real quick, could you tell me the difference between willfully and knowingly fail to refuse or to comply with any lawful order in regards to the police amendment here?
It's a higher standard of intent. There's reckless, then there's knowingly, and then there's willful. So we would need to show that it was not only intentional, but that you willfully engaged in that conduct. There is a definition of willfully that I don't know is in your packet. It's just a level of intent, which is consistent with the state statutes.
Okay. Thank you.
And I don't want to jump the gun here. Is there any further questions for staff? And if not, please don't go far in case we have more questions. See none. We'll open up to the public. Is there public input on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to place the proposed ordinance on first read and authorize necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk, roll up in a roll. Members cast their vote. Have received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Amendments to Titles I, III, and V of the Code of the City of Wichita pertaining to criminal offenses.
Good morning, Sharon DeGraff again. As previously noted in the former item, these are all amendments that are necessary to bring our criminal codes into compliance with state law. Title I is amended to change the definition of domestic offense, which would include threatened acts of violence. Section 3.30, which deals with entertainment establishment licenses. This is a correction to make it clear that folks need to leave the facility, both inside and outside the facility at closing times. 5.26 is again amended to require that possession be willful, not just knowingly. Likewise, the definition of marijuana is amended to include three substances, which are not defined as marijuana in the state statutes. Section 5.42 regarding temporary deprivation of property is amended. Currently, we have a separate enhanced penalty for temporary deprivation of a motor vehicle. However, there was not a separate ordinance making that a crime. It has been confusing for law enforcement and prosecution staff as to whether, which section should be charged. That will clear up that issue. 5.68 is amended consistent with the state statute, which took, took out the exception for a sexual battery, that the victim could not be the spouse of the offender. Lastly, 5.68.2 relates to the, to the crime of sodomy. We are recommending that that ordinance be repealed. No charges have been filed under that ordinance since 2013. Additionally, there are Supreme Court cases that hold laws which only apply to members of one, members of the same sex, be that they are unconstitutional. Again, it's recommended that the city council place the amendments on first reading and authorize any necessary signatures.
Can you describe to us the definition of marijuana that is proposed in the ordinance versus the statutory definition by Kansas law?
Yes, the, the changes on page...
Six.
Yeah, six and seven. It adds three substances, which are not considered to be marijuana under the state statute. We did not have those exceptions. One was the industrial hemp, one was the cannabidiol, which I think is one of the oils. And then it also lists certain exceptions on the schedules, which are not considered to be marijuana. Schedules two through five. And that brings it into consistency with the state statute. So, we're taking items out of our current definition of marijuana.
Okay. And is our definition more restrictive or less restrictive than the state statute?
It mirrors the state statute.
Thank you. All right, questions for staff? Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Page three, Section F, I guess that'd be page four, but it's Section F, Item Four, testing equipment used for, or intended for use in identifying it or in analyzing the strength effectiveness or purity of controlled substances. Does that include the fentanyl test strips that we've been...
At this point, it would, yes.
So, is that something we can throw an amendment in right now and just strike fentanyl test strips from our city code?
You, you could. My recommendation would be to have staff look at that, both from a public health standpoint, as well as any federal funding that we might get regarding federal grant funding for drug enforcement. That may or may not have unintended consequences up the road. I do know that you wanted me to look at marijuana. I know that the mayor had wanted to look at the fentanyl test strips. That's certainly something that I intend to bring back to the council.
Okay, thank you.
So, do we know if we are receiving federal money for enforcement of, of our drug code currently?
Um, I'm, and I think Chief Moore was here. I believe that the police department gets a number of federal grants for drug enforcement. So, we would need to look at those to make sure that there's not a requirement that what we are enforcing or that our actions comply with federal law. So, so off the top of my head, I don't, I don't know, but I know when we looked at the marijuana issue, there were some concerns about federal drug task force money.
Mayor, in addition to the research that will be performed by staff, we're also asking our lobbyist, Jim Davenport and his law firm, to research the issue for us, because obviously, we're not the first to ask the question about potential impact of federal funds.
And that, I guess, gets back to my, my original thought when it comes to fentanyl test strips, to test to see if substances have fentanyl laced into them. My understanding is that there's a number of states and cities that are not considering that drug paraphernalia and thus are, are those, do we know? If they, they have seen negative impacts from federal funding?
I know that I can answer that question. I know that there has been a recent trend, at least on the state level, for a number of state legislatures to exclude those. There was a bill in our State House of Representatives to exclude those. It did not get passed this last, last session.
And what we'd be doing if we excluded fentanyl test strips, we would essentially, we wouldn't be legalizing it. We would just be making a statement that we'll be using our resources for, for other, for other crimes other than, I guess, arresting people for testing substances to ensure they're safe, or don't have fentanyl in them?
That would not prohibit the Wichita Police Department from enforcing the state law. Those cases would need to go through the district court rather than municipal court.
Right. Councilmember Bluebaugh.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have any idea how many people we've charged with possession of fentanyl test strips?
I don't know of any in, in municipal court from my prosecutor's standpoint. I don't know whether Chief Moore has any data or not.
Interim Chief Flynn Moore, I don't have the data at this time. I can go and research and see if we have any.
Further questions for staff? And of course, staff will be on hand as the discussion unfolds. Input from the public on this item? Is there input from the public? See none. We will have discussion, bring discussion back to the bench. We'll open up discussion with Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, thanks, Mayor. Not completely germane to this, but I did have a question since we are amending potentially these ordinances. The state of Kansas does not have a hate crime law. Is there a way that the city could have a hate crime ordinance?
We do.
We have a hate crime ordinance?
We do. It's in Title V. Certain crimes, if committed with intent, discriminatory intent, there is a accelerated penalty, and I can provide you that site when I get back to my phone.
I would definitely appreciate that, given the two hate crimes I'm aware of. The one that was the young baby that got kicked in the store, and then recently, the young man who was shot by his, I believe they were neighbors, but they had a confrontation. Many racial slurs were used. I just wanna make sure that we have that protection for folks.
We, we, we do if the charges are made here in municipal court. Certainly, if it's in the district court, those are left to the state statutes. But anything that is filed in municipal court can be subject to an enhanced penalty, and I can send that to you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna say that I think we need to get moving on these fentanyl test strips as soon as possible. This is something that could save lives. It's the number one killer of people between ages 18 and 45. So, I don't know what the correct action is, you know, whether to move forward on it today or give it a little bit of time to parse through all the details, but this is something that I'd like to see some expediency on.
So, what we could do is we, we could make any amendments we want at this point. This would go on for a second read. So, if we were to make changes to this ordinance, and let's say LEO comes over the next week with some more information, and we would have a second bite of the apple next week if we pull it off consent and choose to massage the ordinance further. So, at this point, you, you can, I'm sorry. At this point, you can, we, we can have discussion to make changes to the language if, if that's a, the will of the body. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me, Vice Mayor Tuttle.
That's okay. Thank you. I agree that the, we have a fentanyl crisis in our city, our state, and across the nation. I just want us to, I encourage us to proceed with some caution. We just brought this up on Friday at Agenda Review. We had a three-day weekend. So, in the spirit of transparency, I think the community needs an opportunity to weigh in. It's my understanding that Chief Moore, perhaps, are planning some sort of town hall and that fentanyl is going to be a topic. I think the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition has been contacted. So, I think that could be an excellent opportunity to get some constituent feedback. I spoke with Sheriff Easter, who recently held a town hall, if you will, or a community discussion on fentanyl and is seen by many to be a community expert. I also spoke with folks from the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition Governance Board over the weekend. There are questions about fentanyl strips, because they are not legal to purchase or possess in the state of Kansas. People have to purchase them from sources such as, you know, the, the web. And so, there's questions of validity. There's questions of the source of which they come from. What if people purchase strips and they're not actually providing accurate results? Then people could engage in drug use that could cause them harm. What would be the city's liability in that? So, thinking of what's best for the community, you know, I would just encourage us to gather more information and to make sure that we're making really thoughtful decisions. And there are other examples in public health where, where options like this have been afforded, but we have to think of the unintended consequences as well. So, I, I don't think we're near ready to be able to make this very important decision until we get more input from experts and from community members. Thank you.
Councilmember Bluebaugh.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and actually, my comments kinda echo Vice Mayor Tuttle's. Outside of discussions we've had with this body, I really don't know anything about what a fentanyl strip, what the accuracy is or anything, and some of the PSAs I've seen, and so small the particles are. I, I, you know, I, I know we need to get on top of the crisis. I need, I think we need to have a workshop or something to discuss everything about it, but I would sure hate to endorse something or be behind something that would give somebody a false narrative, too. They're just, we're losing too many, too many people to it, and I think, I think we need to have a lot larger discussion.
Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Thank you. I just, when I was going through my notes, I did forget to mention one that I would just like to highlight. The Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition, which has representatives from the city and the county, has decided to remain neutral on this point because of all the comments that I made previously, because we have seats on, on that, and, and one of the representatives on that entity. I just thought I would like to make that known to this body and to the community. Thank you.
Now, those organizations are neutral on this topic. The, the organizations you mentioned, they are officially neutral on this, on this item, is... Okay. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanna say I support Councilmember Hoheisel's effort on this. I do think with law, we should check in to see if anything would be jeopardized by that. But, if we could have that maybe reported out in a workshop, I think that'd be good to inform everybody. But, I absolutely agree that we should have those. I've read too many stories of, of folks who either had some drugs, that had fentanyl in it and died, or folks who had test strips and were able to test what they had and throw away those drugs because they had fentanyl. I actually just read a story about a police officer who, I think, was making an arrest or investigating something. Fentanyl was on the object that had touched his gloves, and upon removing them, he almost died and immediately collapsed. And it took five cans of Narcan to, to save his life. So, this is far too serious for us not to have those, both for our first responders and our community as well.
And it just gets back to, I think, what we're doing today is, there's nothing we could do as a body to supersede Kansas law. If Kansas law still says that fentanyl test strips are illegal, then they are legal. What this would do is it would take the city court, the municipal court, out of the equation. So, if folks who had these were actually being charged, it would have to go to district court, which would open up resources at the city level and allow our resources to be really engaging what I think most people would consider higher-level crime. So, I, I'm interested to have deeper discussion about this. I mean, fentanyl is the number one killer right now. How, how far do we want to push this issue out to get more information? For many of us, we, we've been studying this issue longer than three days since this came up. And frankly, sometimes, we, we make a commitment to the public from the bench that we're going to look into something, and then we never actually do. Then, we never have that follow-up. So, that's one of my concerns, is if folks say, "Hey, we need to have a workshop about what is going to be the societal impact of not charging people in district court if they have a fentanyl test strip." Okay, but, you know, it is, we, we do have an opportunity now to be more proactive, and then maybe if, if we find out that there is a large societal detriment to ensuring that people who, who have a substance that they need to test, that that substance isn't going to kill them, we can come back and change it again. So, I, I, I'm very interested to know where, where folks are, particularly with the test strips, because again, you know, I, I've had way too many friends die because of the opioid crisis. And my best friend in high school died earlier this year. And, you know, and fentanyl has been playing a, a big role in this because it's synthetic poison, and people are, as was mentioned, not only being exposed to it without being a, a, an addict, but also being, being almost tricked into having this within other substances. So, I, I'm just really interested. I, I think that some folks have come in here with really one side of the issue or another, and it might be some folks who are more, more, more fluent. So, let's have that discussion. Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Thank you. Chief Moore, could you maybe join us for a moment? The, the town hall that I mentioned, is that going to be happening? And could you have an estimated timeline of when that would be happening? I just think that, you know, again, I, I don't have a position on fentanyl strips, because I don't know enough right now. And I think that even though, you know, the mayor made some really valid points, that it's, you know, basically just saying we won't charge it, but it's also sending a statement that the city supports fentanyl strips, and I want fentanyl testing strips. And I, I just wanna make sure that going into it, we understand what the community also feels regarding this issue, what the Mental Health and Substance Abuse ment- professionals in this community feel about this issue, and even from a perspective of the Wichita Police Department, what you think. So, can you give me a timeline of when this town hall may happen? Thank you.
We actually started planning last week, I believe last Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, when it got on our radar. And I wanted it done within the month. So, my designee that is planning it is working with the DEA and a couple of other agencies to put this town, town hall on, so that, you know, we can bring different community members and experts, EMS, the coroner's office, forensic science center, to be able to have those discussions with the community and to update them and make them aware of what's happening and what's going on. So, logistically, we have all the names of individuals that we're going to have in place, and I, I, one of my designee to have it done within the next probably three weeks or so. Thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Moore, real quick, sorry, I'm just trying to get your exercise in today. The town hall, is that centered around fentanyl? Is that what the main crux of the town hall is going to be?
Yes.
Okay. And you don't have to answer this. I don't know if it's appropriate to ask you, but in your professional opinion, would it save lives if we had fentanyl test strips more available?
Well, in my professional opinion, as far as if that's available to be able to identify if there's drugs, if it's a legitimate test strip and it's approved by, you know, the government or whoever to utilize, it probably would save lives. So that obviously goes without being said, you know, things along those lines, same way as if we had more gun locks on guns, you know, it'd save lives. Stuff's still dangerous, but it's how we moderate and deal with it.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Tuttle.
I think I'd remember. Just to counterpoint that, again, because I'm not making a stand either way, I just don't know enough, but Chief Moore brought up a great point, is he said, you know, when fentanyl test strips are approved by the government, and as of right now, I don't know if they are, I don't think they are, and it's certainly not legal to purchase or possess in our own state. So again, I think that having a town hall, learning from experts, hearing from the community, and then, you know, making a decision after we better understand what are the unintended consequences would be the way that I would hope this body would proceed today. Thank you.
Well, I could tell you as someone from a state that has been ravished by the opioid pandemic, I don't know anyone who is victim of fentanyl-laced products in which their family has come back and said that they wish they didn't have a way to test that. So I'm not sure what the argument would be for folks who are recovering or folks who are fighting addiction, folks who frankly might be exposed to it from other ways. I think they have one thing, but then they have another. I'm not sure what the other argument, because the other side of the argument would essentially be to continue and not know what's in a substance. So I'm not sure how that argument would play out as far as a real public discussion. Like, are there people that others know who would rather folks who are exposed to this type of chemical to continue to not know that they're being exposed to this type of chemical? So like, I understand the input from the community and also ensuring that we have professionals in the community, I guess, speak on this, but I also understand that this is a national push to protect our children and our kids who, young people, as it is the number-one cause of death between 18 and 45. So my understanding is that there is a large academic body of literature and practice that, that supports having access to, not even having access, we're not even talking about having access to it, we're talking about we're just not going to take you to city court if you happen to have one of these. So this is like the lowest level you can do. I'm not sure what that other side of argument really would entail. Vice Mayor Tuttle.
My concerns I've articulated, but I'll be a little bit redundant. If we do this, it is saying that the city endorses this, and so I just want to make sure that we have, or from my perspective, the information. The concern that I heard from the mental health community, from the substance abuse community, and from the public health community, who all said there's good sides and there's bad sides of this. But because fentanyl test strips aren't currently regulated, the question could be that somebody could order off of the internet test strips that aren't valid, that aren't quality, and then they get a false report. Again, I'm speaking as a novice to this topic, and that's why I would like to be able to learn more before I make a decision from this bench. Thank you.
That's fine. I just also find it interesting that the Substance Abuse Coalition is also neutral on this, and thus I do wonder if there is an actual pushback against it based off previous testimony.
I'll be happy to give the answer to that since I was at the meeting, if you'd like.
Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Thank you. The reason that the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition remain neutral on this topic is because it is not legal to purchase or possess fentanyl test strips at the state level, and so they did not feel that it would be prudent for the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition to support or endorse something that was against state law. That was the rationale. And then also Sheriff Easter was there, and he also highly recommended that we not support fentanyl test strips at this time as that organization. Thank you.
But the organization, knowing that Sheriff Easter is against it, knowing that it's illegal to have possessions of these under state law, they still didn't come out against it for those reasons, and therefore they are still neutral, which I believe is telling in itself. It might, maybe I'm reading between the lines, but it seems like, seems like there might be hesitancy to be against it. They're just looking for more, more ways in which they could be potentially for it.
And when I say they were neutral, when asked if they would support fentanyl test strips, they did not want to endorse them, so no action was taken.
Councilmember Blubow.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, my, my thoughts echo my previous statement where I just, I don't know enough about it, I'd like to learn more. I realize time is of the essence, so I guess the faster we can get the information from Police Chief Moore as to how many people we've really charged with strips will kind of give us a better idea as to, hey, you know, we're really not charging a lot of it right now, it'd give us a little bit of time to look at it and so this council has a better understanding, because I don't have a good understanding.
Further discussion, and again, we're talking about the entire ordinance, not just fentanyl test strips. I personally think striking fentanyl test strips is not an endorsement of using fentanyl test strips, it's a statement that we'll use our resources and our courts for actual, you know, use it for better, for better cases than just, I guess, someone who's ensuring that there, that any substance is free of fentanyl contamination. So I, I guess I'll just disagree with the idea that if we were to stay, have the ordinance be silent on fentanyl test strips, that we just commit that, hey, we got better things in our courts to worry about, then that is not, in my opinion, a direct endorsement of it. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, do we have a workshop scheduled for next Tuesday?
Yes, we do.
We do? Okay. Is there anywhere we could get an additional 20-minute maybe overview about fentanyl test strips, just in that way we can keep this conversation going?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
And then if we decide to act, will we have to pull the ordinance back up?
You could schedule it for July 5th.
Okay. All right, so more discussion about the ordinance in general. There was discussion about getting community input, the community has voted when it comes to marijuana and THC products. Is there any discussion about moving forward on utilizing our, our court funds and our police resources when it comes to marijuana? Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Thank you. Again, a very weighty topic. I appreciated Councilmember Blubow at the Agenda Review on Friday asked for the information to be brought to us from when this discussion happened, way before I was on council, I think it was 2014 or 2015. I know that it was just on Friday at around 11:00, and we did, yesterday, we celebrated Juneteenth, but I haven't seen that information yet, so I would not be interested in pursuing just having, you know, a vote on this today. Again, in the spirit of transparency, bringing something up on a Friday at 11:00 and asking us to vote it on a Tuesday when there's a holiday weekend doesn't seem very transparent to me at all. I would like to have much more community engagement, as happened the first time, but certainly a synthesis of the information when it was brought to the council previously. Thank you.
Should we table this and get information on the entire ordinance then?
Mayor, we could do the same thing with marijuana that you want to do with fentanyl strips. We can bring, I think Sharon can do a nice summary of all the steps we've been through on marijuana, including the referendum and then what was done by the Attorney General. So I mean, there's a history here, and we'd be more than happy to go through all of it next Tuesday with you, if you'd like to do that.
Well, if we're concerned about just having three days to look over this entire ordinance, though, I think that's the main concern, should we table it? Should we wait until the town hall? Should we wait until we get informations from experts to tell us about the dangers of a test strip or THC in certain products? Councilmember Johnson.
I was just trying to take my name off. Thanks, Mayor. I was just gonna say, I was gonna ask you, were you suggesting striking item J? But if we do a workshop, then I don't need an answer for that.
Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Thank you. I would like to see us move forward. It's my understanding, and Sharon, correct me if I'm wrong, the information that's presented to us today and the recommended actions is just to make sure that we're in line with state, with the state law after the legislative session happened. So I feel like we could proceed with this today, and then if there are items regarding THC and fentanyl test strips, that could be brought up at another point, another time. I don't know regarding, you know, making sure that we're in line with the state laws, if there are timelines that need to be followed or adhered, so I would just lean into your recommendation. Thank you, Sharon.
There, excuse me, there are not timelines as far as adopting the ordinances, however, it is important that we are not less restrictive than state law. We can be more restrictive, we just cannot be less restrictive. There are a number of ordinances that would need to be changed if you want to do something with marijuana. Possession of marijuana has its own statutory offense. The changes here before you are just definitions. So there would be a number of other ordinances that you would need to look at as part of that discussion. So I think you could pull the drug item and bring it back at a date specific, pass everything else. I think you could pass the entire packet and direct staff to bring back, again, the definitions of marijuana and testing equipment for drugs.
Councilmember Blubow.
Mayor, Sharon, if you don't mind, my question is kind of piggyback, Vice Mayor Tuttle's as well. What is the consequences of being less restrictive than state?
If you're less restrictive than state, you can get a letter from the Attorney General. I had one of those written to me about marijuana. That's really the primary thing, is that we need to be in compliance with state law. There may be some state grant funding that requires us to be in compliance with state law, and again, these are all things that I haven't looked at since at least 2014 or 2015. Grant assurances change for each specific grant. So I think there are a number of things that staff could look at and come back and be much more educated globally from how that would affect the city.
So I do want to make it clear, we're not, no one's suggesting to be less restrictive than state law. We're talking about what we choose to enforce within our courts. Any, it wouldn't be making any of these items legal, it would be now up to the district to determine what gets prosecuted and what doesn't. Is that a correct read?
Yes.
My understanding is other cities in Kansas have gone forward with similar actions to reflect the values of the community, particularly on marijuana, and those have not been overturned by Supreme Court or any of those type of mechanisms in which a unlawful policy would have to undergo. Is that a correct statement?
There are a number of cities who do not enforce criminal violations at all. Those all go to the, to the District Attorney's Office. Lawrence has reduced their fine even less than the $25 that we have for possession of marijuana. I think in order to determine how many marijuana cases we file each year, how many paraphernalia cases we file each year, how many of those folks are under 21, there are a lot of moving factors to this. And again, it's up to the city council to determine what policy they want, but you are correct, the city is under no legal duty absent any grant funding to enforce marijuana. But, but again, the, your law enforcement is still going to have to go out and deal with those cases. They will just be hold for a state warrant, held overnight in jail, which they're not currently under our NTA system, and then reviewed by the District Attorney's Office.
I actually thought legal had a, a good way forward to perhaps pass the packet as is while also within that motion, bringing back the items that pertain to fentanyl and also marijuana in a, in a future meeting, but also between now and that future meeting, have the ability to have not only the workshop, but also the public, public hearing on this or the town hall. Does that, does that add up? Staff, would that, the order of those events work? Enough time, enough? Would you be able to review the ordinance in that time? Chief Moore, would you be able to host a town hall during that time? And to the city manager, would you be able to put together a workshop within that timeframe?
If we're talking between now and July 5th, I think that's a way too short timeframe to get a workshop, and I don't know what timeframe Chief was looking at for his town hall. I mean, 60 days, I think, and I'm not speaking for the manager scheduling workshops, but I think 60 days would give time, would give staff time to look at a number of these issues, provide information perhaps even before any sort of workshop or meeting regarding the history of this, and it is substantial, and then get direction at that time.
We're not bound to have a workshop just the last meeting of the month, right, or your fourth meeting. We can schedule it, you know, a time earlier if the council would like that and working around your schedules. We can do it, basically piggyback on a council meeting and put it towards the end. So we're flexible in that regard. If you're comfortable moving forward with these changes, I'll continue to work with you on appropriate scheduling, just as we do research. While you were talking, I just looked at fentanyl, what governments are doing on fentanyl test strips, and I found that they're all over the board, from CDC encouraging them to City of Denver, State of Washington, talking about the dangers of false readings, and so we need to do some research in this.
And I think it's much more important to do this right than just do it fast. So my, my goal at this moment, though, is to make sure that we have set up a plan of action for, for addressing this issue with purpose and also with the ability to have thorough understanding from professionals, from leading practices, and also from the input from the community. So if we pass this with the anticipation of a workshop and then to bring this back on the agenda, what dates could we, could I motion to have this come back up on the What would work best for staff? Perhaps the first week of August? It's what? Evening budget meeting. Oh, it's still in discussion. I'd love some feedback, my colleagues here, particularly the ones who might have a calendar in front of them. Thanks for the help, guys. All right, so Chief Moore, what was the date in which you are going to have the public forum?
All right, so we're still working on that. I'm working with a lot of other agencies, so we're looking at least within the month. So I, three months, three weeks at the latest that we're going to put that on, a date hadn't been set, but it should be coming up pretty quick.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. August 2nd, August 2nd is the first weekend, or the first
Thank you, Mayor. August 2nd. August 2nd is the first weekend or the first meeting of August. So...
August 2nd is the first meeting of what?
Of August.
And that's not our evening?
No, that's, I believe that's the 4th.
That's a normal meeting. Is that what you just said?
Yeah.
Okay. And we can, something else comes up, we can also push it off to another, to another meeting if needed. However, legal did say that they needed, they wanted 30 to 60 days to do? Okay. And if not, please let us know. We'll hunt this down the road if we need to. Obviously, we, the intent is to allow enough time to collect this information while also laying out a timeline for the public. So, so I guess that the cleanest motion would be, and I'm thinking out loud before I make the motion, would be to accept SASS recommended action, to place the proposed ordinance on first reading and authorize necessary signatures while revisiting, what's the good language for this?
Direct staff to bring back on August 2nd information and background on removing marijuana and fentanyl test strips from the city's code.
Do we want you just to bring information, or do we want the ordinance to come back up for potential amendments?
The information would come to you in a workshop. So, if your intent is to have an item to consider on August 2nd, then I think what Sharon outlined is accurate, would be accurate.
Okay. Yeah, the intent would be to have it come back for, for an actionable item.
If that's the council's intent, that's, yeah.
If the motion passes, it would be, yes. Okay. That's my intent in making the motion. All right. Well, I, I think we had some really good discussion on this, and I think that it's important how we move forward. I want to compliment Vice Mayor Tuttle for her input on ensuring that we're able to get a workshop and ensure that we kind of come alongside Chief Moore's public forum that he's planning on hosting as well. So, with that, I'll make the motion to place the proposed ordinances on, ordinance on first read and authorize necessary signatures while also directing staff to bring in information and background concerning fentanyl test strips and marijuana. Back as an actionable item on August 2nd. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. I received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
PUD 2022-COPS Technology and Equipment Program Invitational Solicitation.
Welcome back, Chief.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, councilmembers, viewers, staff. Interim Chief Lim Moore. This is a grant that's come up again this year. The council wanted a overview of how we utilize the grant in past years. The current grant is, is going to expire June 28th of this month. So, we'd ask approval to have that approved. But before that, I'd like to go through and give an overview of what the FLOC license plate reader system actually is. It's a, like a fingerprint technology system that's a patent through this company, FLOC. It allows the identification of a vehicle by build, make, color, the tag number. The information is held in the system for about 30 days and then deleted. It has the ability to allow law enforcement to connect across the nation and communicate when a vehicle is stolen or a tag is on a vehicle, that a stolen tag is on a vehicle, to identify where that vehicle is located through picture data that is saved in the, in the system. Here you'll see a deployment map of where we have placed the 135 cameras that we have in our system. 110 of those cameras are owned by the City of Wichita. 25 are owned by private businesses. We do allow HOAs, neighborhood association businesses to obtain these FLOC cameras. The map that you see on the screen now are the hotspots of the Part 1 crimes that have occurred, violent crimes that occur in the City of Wichita, either violent crimes against an individual or violent crimes against property such as drive-by shootings, things along those lines. The outcomes initially at the beginning of last year, FLOC has assisted in recovering $1.5 million in property. 157 stolen vehicles were recovered, 24 firearms, 163 arrests were made. 110 of those were felony. 47 of them were misdemeanors. We also were able to get back in custody four runaways and get them back to their, their families and one missing person. Up to date now, to present, we have about $3.6 million in recovery in property, 347 stolen vehicles that are recovered. Added to this, four missing individuals also have been found safe and placed back with their families. FLOC is very helpful, and we do have these silver alerts that go out to be able to take and identify those vehicles that they're driving, the tag numbers across the city and across the county. As you see here on the screen, in green, FLOC has helped in reducing the amount of auto thefts that have occurred as of 2021, when we had a huge number of auto thefts occurring each month. In January, you had 268 as compared to a year-to-date this year, 230. So, that's a reduction, 239 last year to 164. This is also attributed to the auto crimes enforcement team that we put together. It was a 90-day program where you had officers from different cities throughout Cedric County going out and working with the FLOC system. And so, whenever there was a reading, that alert that a vehicle was stolen or a tag was identified, that team was able to go out and deal with those alerts instantly. Right now, currently that team's not intact, so in between calls, when alerts come out, officers go out and, and try and identify where those vehicles are. Some of the wins, and these are wins that, that are recent. The one that we're going to talk about now was, happened last year in March, where there was a shooting, which ended up being a homicide at 13th and Oliver. A van was the vehicle that was being driven by the suspect in that, that situation. The detectives were able to identify that by looking at the FLOC photo, that right before the officers pulled the vehicle over, the van over, the window was up. And the homicide investigators noticed when they were doing their search, after, you know, the, the processing of the vehicle afterwards, when it was in the lab, that the vehicle, the window was down. And so, with that, they went back and they were able to narrow down through FLOC where that vehicle was located. And instead of looking for, at a four-mile radius area, trying to find the weapon that was thrown out of the vehicle, they narrowed it down to four blocks. And the, the VCCRT, which is the Violent Crimes Community Response Team, were able to identify and find that weapon that was used in that homicide. So, I truly believe that another death was prevented by finding that weapon, because instead of a kid coming across it and something happening, or another person coming across it and selling and using that weapon again, we were able to narrow it down and get it into custody pretty quick. So, FLOC attributed to that. The next story just happened back in May of this year. Can't go into a lot of detail of it. Obviously, these things are still in court, but FLOC assisted. There was a shooting at Harriet Alpeco, which ended up being a homicide. This is one that Councilmember Johnson was referring to a little bit earlier in reference to the race issues that were involved. The witnesses, which were very helpful, we have a fantastic community, came forward and said, hey, there was a Tantajo involved. Officers were able to go back to the Quick Trip, which, in the nearby area, which they learned was involved, see the video, see that there were two suspects or two individuals that were entering and exiting that Tantajo. Went back to the FLOC system, put the information about that Tahoe in the FLOC system, found that there was a similar Tahoe that was driven in, driven in the area of 47th and Broadway frequently. And so, they sent their officers out there to flood that area, go block by block, to try and identify where this, this vehicle could be located. They were able to get an address and then get an individual and charge him with first-degree murder in this. And that individual did use racial slurs and was, the enhanced federal, I'm sorry, felony charge to the state was added to that one. The next one here, the last one I'm going to go over is Harriet Hillside. This is something that, that is alarming to, you know, everyone, our community. Reason being is because there was a stolen vehicle from our community that showed up on the FLOC license plate reader. Our officers were able to get the alert and then get the vehicle down. They didn't know who was in that vehicle. We don't know who's in the vehicle, but they were able to do a short police chase. The vehicle hit a curb, was not rendered drivable. Suspect started to run, through the back, back to the side. We got the suspect into custody. And after identifying who the suspect was, he was wanted on a warrant for intent to kill in a crime that he had committed, and that's why he was on the run. But he was also already a felon convicted of manslaughter. So, he was in our city, stole a vehicle, and was driving around with the weapon and $140,000 cashier's check in his backpack, and that just happened six days ago. So, FLOC is contributing and helping out tremendously in getting individuals. And who knows what that individual would have done to one of our citizens if we were not to come across him. The system is not, it's not cheap, which is the reason why it's great to buy this stuff on grants. And so, you know, utilizing the grant to pay for the FLOC systems and to pay for the hardware, software, and entry into the system is important. And we're going to continue to find grants to be able to pay for this for years to come. But right now, currently, as of this grant, it expires June 28th. And so, we're, we're seeking approval for the grant funding to be approved by the council.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Fry?
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation, Chief. Earlier in your statement, you talked about the ACE program and how it worked in tandem with FLOC and had some great success. But that was a temporary program that has ended. This is only paying for equipment. It's not allowing us to fund any of those ACE officer, officer assignments.
That is correct. Yes, just a technology grant to buy technology, the equipment itself.
And you mentioned that with the technology, officers will just be able to use it as they can, not monitoring it like they had been using with the ACE team.
Right, with the ACE team. There was a huge dent put on catalytic converters that were being stolen, auto thefts that were being stolen, vehicles that were being stolen, and then a lot of stolen property, as you saw, $3.6 million to date of property value that's been recovered.
Yeah. Well, I'm grateful for the, the opportunity to get the grant funding for the technology. It can only work if it's in tandem with officer time. So, as we go through our budget and trying to figure out how we can make sure that we're freeing up officers to continue to use this equipment to its best efficiency, that's a concern.
Yes, yeah. We're always looking to add more officers. You know, working with staff, they're all for adding officers to our department. The problem that we're running into is actually getting officers to apply for the police department, or people. So, that's our big problem. It's just like everyone else is, you know, dealing with the mental health. But yeah, if we had the staffing, we'd see a true reduction in crime if we were ever able to have that idle, you know, crime investigative team.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. Ditto to everything Councilmember Fry said. Also, this presentation, I appreciate that, Chief. Exactly why I wanted to pull this, this item as we talk about all the good police work going on. This is a great example of that over the years and how effective this equipment has been. So, I appreciate the presentation and letting the public know so much better than it's just being on consent and people not knowing the true impact of what this work is doing. But again, I also agree with Councilmember Fry. We got to figure out how we can get more people to keep those other efforts going, too.
Thank you, sir.
Vice Mayor Tuttle?
I just have a comment and a question. Thank you for the presentation and thank you for this program. I actually have a few of my homeowners association meetings, my neighborhoods, where they have linked into the system. I'm probably not saying that the right way, but...
No, you're saying it right.
Yeah, they saw the presentation at council, or, you know, I think it even came to our DABs. And so, thank you for that. It's, it's spreading farther than even just the work at the WPD. Is this a one-time grant? Is that my understanding, the $1,600,000 to purchase?
For this year. I've also, we've already applied again for next year to expand this to a bigger center, working with Wichita State University and our federal partners to form a possible real-time crime center, which is going to utilize less personnel on the street and utilizing technology, which is not biased, to be able to deal with, and police officers aren't biased, but I'm just saying that that's what the big push is for technology, is that it has a non-biased component to it.
Sure. So, how long does this type of technology remain relevant? Because my fear is, and I saw in the, the green sheet and the financial consideration, there will be ongoing costs involving the camera system that will not be covered after the grant period ends. Funding will be incorporated into future budget requests. I just want to be cognizant of the fact that, and Bob's shaking, I don't know if he wants to answer or just, but I, you know, I'm very familiar with grants. I've mentioned this from the bench before my career on council. That was my entire world. And so, grants, you know, this is maybe a one-time opportunity, maybe next year, but then what are we going to do in the future for the costs that aren't covered, but then if we need to retrofit and update the system?
Yeah. And from our standpoint, we've, I've looked at that, our staff, and which is why we're working with Wichita State University and our federal partners to allow that to happen. This is a lot bigger picture than a lot of us even see at this point in time when, when working with WSU and their, their research teams. The real-time crime center is going to open up jobs here in the City of Wichita and bring in a lot more funding than, you know, our expectations. And we'll be able to use that funding for different things. But how that looks, we're still working on right now. The individuals, my, my experts that were supposed to present this presentation are at another police department in another state right now, looking at their real-time crime center. And so, they're not here to do this. But yeah, we're looking at it and we're working, doing all of our research and background to be able to continue the funding and looking, looking at keeping this up to date. But when it's all said and done, we'll be the, the first and only ones doing it in the, in the nation.
Which is amazing. I just want to highlight that. This is a piece of a bigger plan moving forward, utilizing technology that's not only less biased than human error, but also more effective i- in many ways. I love the, the, the push to not only modernize our equipment, but also to trailblaze, to eventually be one of the first cities in the nation to have the type of center that, that you're discussing right now. I, I agree when it comes to what folks have said, well, what about staffing? And we're going to fight and do everything we can to give you the staff and the people you need to make Wichita one of the safest communities in the country. And also, part of that, of course, goes to our last discussion, is what are our priorities? You know, do we want folks watching cameras when there's an Amber Alert to make sure they can identify and recover that child? Or do we want them, you know, pulling up the grandma's house who has a THC cartridge that she uses to help go, go to bed at night and make it an arrest there? So, I think that, you know, this is a timely discussion about modernization and also timely to have this discussion, especially before budget, and just looking forward when it comes to technology and how we can integrate that technology. So, I really appreciate you giving us this presentation, and I really appreciate you being that forward-thinking as our interim chief. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Is there input from the public? There is no input from the public. And I will make the motion to accept SASS recommended action. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. I've received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
PUD 2022-9, City's Own Change From Neighborhood Retail and Limited Commercial to Planned Unit Development to Permit Live Entertainment in Addition The Existing Commercial Uses of Property Located on the Southwest Corner of West Maple Street and South Meridian Avenue, 301 South Meridian.
Welcome back.
Good morning. Scott Wedle. And I think we do win the competition again for the longest title of an agenda item. This case, this item is being presented today because the DAB and Planning Commission recommendations are for, they're both for approval, but they differ with the conditions. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from Neighborhood Retail and LC Limited Commercial to Planned Unit Development, which is custom zoning. Property is located at the southwest corner of Maple and Meridian. It is approximately two acres in size and is developed with a former school building and accessory structure and parking lot. So, here's the picture of it. The request is, the applicant has requested rezone the site to a planned unit development. The intent, as was stated earlier, is to expand the existing music school component by allowing for live music events at the site. And one important note is that as part of this request, alcohol would not be permitted at the events at the site per the PUD zoning that's requested. In terms of the context, properties to the north of the site, across Maple Street, are zone TF3, two-family residential and LC Limited Commercial. These properties are developed with single-family residences and a tire repair shop. Properties to the south of the subject site are zone TF3, two-family residential and developed with single-family houses. Properties to the east of the site are zoned LC Limited Commercial and B multifamily residential. These properties are developed with commercial and multifamily uses. And properties to the west of the site are zone TF3 residential and MF29 multifamily residential and are developed with single-family houses. In terms of review, on May 19th, the public hearing for this item was held at the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the application unanimously, 12 to 0, subject to staff recommendations. One member of the public spoke at this hearing with concerns about the application. One member of the public spoke at this hearing with concerns about the application. On June 6th, the District Advisory Board reviewed the request for recommended approval unanimously, again, nine to zero. And they did have some conditions that differed from what the Planning Commission recommended. And here they are in summary. That outdoor events would be permitted, but would be restricted to the northeast quadrant of the property, and sound amplification systems would be required to face east towards South Meridian Avenue. That outdoor events would cease by 10:00 PM on any night of the week, and that indoor events should cease operation by 10:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday, and 12:00 AM, Friday and Saturday. So, that largely was the difference between the DAB recommendation and the Planning Commission recommendation. In terms of protest, no protests were received for this case. For the recommendation, it is recommended the City Council adopt the findings of the Planning Commission and approve the requested zone change, place the ordinance on first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval and a second reading. You also have a number of alternatives on this one. You can override the MAPC recommendation, accept the DAB recommendation, and approve the zone change with the DAB conditions. This would require five of seven votes. You can override the MAPC recommendation, provide alternative findings, and deny the zone change. That, again, requires five of seven votes. Or, of course, you can return it to the MAPC for additional consideration, which requires four of seven votes. And I am not changing the slides, so, we got a preview of all the graphics there. So, I'll take you through just the images, or I'll stand here and we can go through the images together. Okay, that's all right. We can, we'll go with it. So, this is the map from the comprehensive plan, showing commercial use. This is the site plan, which was submitted as part of the PUD. Again, you can see it's a former school site, parking lot, playground. Again, no protests were received for this one. Here's photos of the site. We'll just kind of cruise around. You can see the residential dwellings in proximity to the site. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff?
See none. Thank you. Any public input on this item? Oh, this is the one where we don't. We already had a public meeting on this, and therefore, I apologize. I sometimes just get into my rhythm. So, thank you, Scott, for the reminder. Discussion on this item from the bench? If there is no discussion, then the Chair recognizes Councilmember Bluebaugh as this resides in District Four.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And we did have, we've had a lot of discussion about this, had a long discussion about it at our DAB. I appreciate that it borders a neighborhood, but it also is adjacent to Fringe University. It was a previous school, had a lot of back and forth on this. There's going to be no alcohol at events, anything like that. So, I think it's, I think it's going to be an okay fit for the neighborhood. So, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion. I'd like to move to override the decision of MAPC and approve the application per the DAB recommendations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Have received 78 votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
CUP 2022-17 with Zone 22-25. City's own change from single-family residential to general office and an amendment to CUP DP-18 to permit warehouse self-storage and parcel located within one-quarter mile north of West 21st Street North and within one-half mile east of North Amadon Avenue.
Welcome back.
Good morning. Scott Wadele again. So, this item is being presented today for two reasons. The DAB and Planning Commission recommendations are different, and in this case, one is recommended approval, the other one is recommended denial. Also, a valid protest was submitted. The application is for the following. For first, an amendment to the existing CUP plant, Community Unit Plan on the site in order to allow for warehouse self-storage uses. And second, for a zone change from SF5, Single Family, to GEO, General Office. And a CUP is an additional layer of zoning. So, that's why there's a request for both of those to be changed. In terms of the property, the property is located at the northwest corner of 22nd Street and Hood. The subject site is just about an acre and a half in size. It is Zoned SF5, Single Family, and is part of the larger Community Unit Plan, which goes to properties to the south. The site is developed and in use as a parking lot, and you can see that on the aerial here. In terms of the request, the applicant has indicated that they are requesting the zone change so that they can construct and operate self-storage units on the site. The proposed use of warehouse self-storage does have supplementary use regulations in the Unified Zoning Code. These are conditions that are automatically added to a case as part of the recommendation. The applicant is requesting a waiver of the following three supplementary use regulations, and these are described in greater detail in the staff report. But the first one is that the requirement that it be contiguous with a less restrictive zoning district. So, this would be a zoning district that would allow for more intensive uses, say something more commercial, industrial or such. The second one is that it would be, the development must be contiguous with an arterial street. Obviously, it's on 22nd Street, so it's not on an arterial street, so that would be why they want that waiver. And then, the third that they requested was a waiver of the requirement for a resident manager to be on-site for the 24-hour security. One note is that screening would be required for this development, and that is detailed in the staff report. In terms of context, properties to the northeast and west are Zoned SF5, Single Family Residential, and are developed with single-family houses. Property to the south is Zoned LC Limited Commercial and is Parcel 1 of the same CUP that includes the subject site where the zone change request is located. Property to the south is developed with commercial uses, including retail, grocery, restaurants, and a bingo hall. In terms of review, on May 19th, the Planning Commission had the public hearing for this item and voted to deny the application, five for one. Two members of the public spoke in opposition to this application with general concerns about traffic, nuisances, noise, trash. The findings of the MAPC centered on the need for the applicant to request waivers from supplementary use regulations, which we went over earlier. And also, that they felt that, the majority of them felt that the subject site does not fit, that the zone request does not fit the context of the area. On June 6th, the District Advisory Board reviewed the request for recommended approval, five to two, subject to staff recommendations. No members of the public spoke at the DAB meeting. One valid protest was received against this case totaling 6.67% of the protest area, so it does not surpass the 20% threshold. Therefore, the request can be approved with a simple majority. In terms of council action, it is recommended the City Council adopt the findings of the Planning Commission and deny the requested zone change. This would require four of seven votes. There are other, two other alternatives listed in the staff report. That is, one is to override the MAPC recommendation, accept the DAB recommendation, provide alternative findings, and approve the zone change. This would require five of seven votes, or, of course, you can return it to the Planning Commission for additional consideration. And with that, I'll pause. I'll take you through the images and the graphics. I'll stand for questions. So, here's an aerial of the area. You can see the residences and the parking lot. This is from the comprehensive plan. You can see commercial and residential are both described for this area. This is from the 21st Street Corridor Plan. It identifies it for infill development. Here's an image from the CUP. Here is the site plan that was submitted as part of the application. And what you're seeing are the storage units and the configuration that they would like to see. Here's the protest map. You can see that one protest was submitted. Here are photos from the area. So, here's the site, some of the residences in the area, the commercial use to the south, and back to the site. This is the commercial use to the south. All right. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Scott, just so I'm clear, the applicant is looking to put a self-storage facility in a neighborhood.
That's correct.
Using neighborhood streets and not the main arterial, which would be 21st Street.
That is correct.
Councilmember, you retain the floor, do you have a follow-up?
No, my name just didn't come off.
See none. Further questions for staff? Thank you. Discussion on this item? If there is no discussion, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Ballard as this item falls within District Six.
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, I appreciate the presentation. I move that we take the, recommend that the City Council adopt the findings of MAPC and deny the requested zone change.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. Have received 78 votes. That motion does pass. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember appointments and comments.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't have an appointment, but if it is okay. Earlier, we had an item that I voted no on twice because I don't agree with removing a competitive process. That was item number five. But I would like to bring that item back up for a potential vote on a different option.
So, the council member is referring to item five and page three of the agenda. It is Engineering Design Services for Subdivision Improvement. The council member has voted on a prevailing side, and therefore, a motion to reconsider that item is in order. Are you making that motion at this time, sir?
I am.
Therefore, I will second that motion. And this is a motion to bring that item back up for discussion. Motion has been made and seconded. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. Have received 78 votes. That motion does pass. We are back on item five, page three, Engineering Design Services for Subdivision Improvement. As folks might recall, there was a substitute motion to go with option three that failed. There was a motion to go with option two that failed. The next option is option one, which might be considered the most transparent and accountable. So, with that, Chair recognizes Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I recognize that this process would add additional weeks, but I prefer to see folks have an opportunity for a competitive bidding process. And I know staff worked hard on that, but the way, the only way I could support that is going with option one. And I know our team is very well capable of finding ways to streamline as much as possible, but I would move that we approve option one.
I'll second that motion and speak to it. I also am in favor of a more competitive bid process, as well as increasing transparency and oversight from the council. So, with that, I will second that motion. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. We're going to ask that all members, okay. Have received four yea votes to three nay votes. That motion does pass. Option one passes. Back on the original agenda, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember appointments and comments.
I'll start off with the appointments. Are there appointments at this time? Guess that'll kick us off. I would like to reappoint to the Diversity, Inclusion, and Civil Rights Board William Polite, and also appoint to the Citizens Review Board Twyla Purity. Is there further appointments? If not, then I'll make a motion to accept those appointments. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members will cast their vote.
Have received 78 votes. That motion passes. We're back on comments. Would just like to thank the community for the incredible Juneteenth, days of celebration of Juneteenth. We were able to, myself and a few other council members here, Councilmember Hoheisel, Councilmember Johnson, were able to march in the Juneteenth parade. And it was just every year that it gets bigger, it gets more, I think more, we see more people out, really a fun time, and just really, really great follow-up events as well. So, I just wanted to report back that these events were incredible and really just thank those who worked so hard to have us have this type of quality events right here in our city. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just piggybacking on that, we did have a great Juneteenth celebration. Want to thank our parking wreck staff, who helped us out making all of that happen, and our police department with the parade. Everything was good this weekend, great turnout, great celebration. Also, wanted to thank Real Men, Real Heroes and Skater Veterinary Clinic for donating to free swim lessons over at McAfee Pool. Apparently, there was so much demand that those were gone probably in the first two hours. Real Men, Real Heroes has notified that they will be committing another $1,000 towards free swimming at McAfee Pool. So, definitely want to thank them for that. They are making a difference. Our young people will be enjoying learning how to swim. That was one of the main things we heard from the community and the importance of pools. So, just wanted to shout them out and thank them for their efforts.
Councilmember Johnson, would it be too much to ask for you to reach out to Real Men, Real Heroes and possibly set up a time in which they can come in and be officially recognized by the City Council? Frankly, the generosity of this, and the need to see these spaces fill up so fast and the generosity of this nonprofit organization is not only saving lives, ensuring that folks have access to swim lessons, so if they were to fall into a pool or something worse, then they could hopefully swim their way out of it, but also exposes young people to swimming as a potential sport. And when we see folks stepping up, stepping out in our community, working alongside our recreation department, I think that just warrants, in doing good, particularly for our youth, I think that just warrants special recognition. So, if we could reach out and possibly set up something, whether at a council meeting or at a press conference, to highlight that, I think it's proper to thank them and also encourage more of that type of activity within our community partners, so.
Yep, will do.
Last thing I'll mention, and then we will be having a motion to go into executive session, is I just want to thank everyone who came out for the Wichita Animal Shelter, who attended our press conference last week. They had, I think, about 400 dogs that, really, these COVID pets to folks who during COVID got pets, and then they didn't have spayed and neutered services during COVID because they were saving PPE. Wound up having this explosion of pets that the Wichita Animal Shelter was struggling with. They did just a really good job, not only at our weekly press conference, but also getting the word out in the media for their event to have those dogs adopted. My understanding, they had hundreds of folks come out and take them up on this offer for a discounted pet. They are still looking for more folks who might be looking for a pet to step up and to either foster a pet or to adopt one. So, just want to give a plug for the Wichita Animal Shelter and to Emily, who's doing great work over there. I get a lot of tags and emails about pets in our community and the concern about pets and their welfare. So, I just want to take this moment and this platform to highlight that there are a lot of animals right now available and looking for good homes. So, please take advantage of this moment if you're someone who's looking for a pet. With that, I will move that the City Council recess into executive session for 15 minutes to receive information on an offer of settlement in a civil lawsuit pursuant to KSA 754319 for legal consultation with the city attorney, which could be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship about pending litigation, legal advice. The executive session is required to protect the privacy interests of an identifiable individual. So, we will have, we will start that at 12:20, and it will go till 12:35, in which we will reconvene back in the chambers. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Clerk will open a roll. Have received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. We will be in executive session in two minutes. We will be in executive session in two minutes. Thank you.